Good afternoon. Before we begin the special city council meeting, I would like to remind members of the audience that anyone wishing to speak during public comment must obtain a number card from the city clerk. If you did not obtain a number and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room, and city staff will issue a number card. Lining up during public comment will not be permitted, and each speaker should remain in their seat until their number is called. The time clock will begin when you begin your comments. Per the city's meeting rules and for fire safety regulations, all persons shall remain seated unless addressing the council, or entering or leaving the chambers. Standing in the aisles or along the walls is prohibited. There is overflow seating available in the lobby. If there are no available seats in the chambers, please proceed to sit in the lobby. Before I call this meeting to order, I understand that council member Mario Trujillo would like to state something for the record regarding procedural matters.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say for the record that I was put on notice of this special meeting, I believe it was September the 11th, Mr. Bradley. What day did we get the email?
It was September 11th and 12th.
Okay. As many of you know, I am an attorney, so I sought legal counsel, and I lodged a complaint with our city attorney and our city Bradley that I want to read into the record because it's of serious concern. So dated September 15th, 2025, addressed to John Funk, Downey City Attorney, and Roger Bradley, Downey City Manager, regarding a Brown Act violation by Mayor Sosa, council members Fromeda, Ortiz, and Pemberton. Dear Mr. Funk and Mr. Bradley, please accept this correspondence as my formal complaint regarding the intentional violation of the Ralph M. Brown Act by Mayor Sosa, council members Fromeda, Ortiz, and Pemberton. The following sets forth factual and legal basis for my complaint and compliance with my duties as an elected public official for the city of Downey. On September 10th, 2025, an original story, not to be confused with a share story or a post, on my personal Instagram account at Mario El Trujillo quoted the following statement from the musical Wicked: "No one mourns the wicked." Soon thereafter, on September 11th, 2025, Mayor Sosa, through his official mayor Instagram account at @mayorhectorosa, initiated a conversation regarding this original story. Specifically, he published a post on his official mayor Instagram feed stating the following: "Our community is strongest when we foster a culture of respect for one another. Political violence is never the answer, and a recent comment by council colleagues suggesting otherwise is reprehensible and does not reflect my values, nor those of the Downey City Council." And I emphasize, the recent, if I may, the recent unfortunate events in our country are a reminder that we should all come together and embrace empathy, compassion, and understanding of one another. In the post-
Order, please, order, please.
The public is reminded that any conduct or behavior that interrupts these proceedings or disrupts them will subject them to removal. They will be warned once, and if the conduct is not stopped, that member of the public will be subject to removal and/or asked to leave. Thank you very much.
In the post, he referenced my title as council member and stated he was speaking on behalf of the Downey City Council. In direct response to Mayor Sosa's post, council member Fromeda, using her official Councilwoman Instagram account at ClaudiaFromedaForDowney, commented by stating at Mayor Hector Sosa, "Thank you for your leadership." Similarly, Councilwoman Pemberton, using her official Councilwoman Instagram account at DorothyForDowney, also replied to Mayor Sosa's post stating, "Thank you, Mayor, for this statement. We share the same sentiment about this event and tragedy of it all. We definitely need more compassion and understanding." Then, council member Ortiz, using his official council member Instagram account, liked, reacted to Mayor Sosa's post through a like. Notably, this exchange prompted community members to ask, "When will he," meaning me, "be removed?" Thereafter, on September 11th, I was informed via an email from Downey City Manager Roger Bradley that Mayor Sosa requested a special council meeting for Wednesday, September 17th, 2025. I was notified that the business of the meeting will include consideration of an appropriate response to, of the city council, including potential censure because of the original story made on my personal social media Instagram account. Given these facts, Mayor Sosa's course of conduct is both wholly improper and unlawful for numerous reasons. As an initial matter, Mayor Sosa is misrepresenting my story and engaging in defamatory allegations against me with no basis in fact. I have never do I now support political violence in any way, shape, or form. Nowhere does my story state such a proposition. More to the point, for purposes of this complaint, however, calling a meeting to censor me based on a private Instagram story is inappropriate, given that the story is unrelated to the city of Downey's business. Nonetheless, if Mayor Sosa and/or you contend that the Downey City Council has subject-matter jurisdiction over my private posts and are proceeding to consider the city's response and possibly censor me, then Mayor Sosa and council members Fromeda, Ortiz, and Pemberton have intentionally violated the Brown Act. Based on communications on an Instagram regarding a story of my personal account, their actions constitute an unlawful serial meeting under the Brown Act. Government Code Section 5495-2.2 Subsection 3, Subsection A explicitly prohibits a majority of a legislative body from using a social media platform to discuss among themselves specific business that is within the subject-matter jurisdiction. Subsection 3, capital B, little i, defines "discuss amongst themselves broadly, including comments or use of digital icons that express reactions to communications made by other members of the legislative body." The conduct of Mayor Sosa, council member Fromeda, council member Ortiz, and Pemberton fall squarely within this prohibition. In addition, if it is Mayor Sosa's in your position that the original story on my personal Instagram account is within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city, then by engaging and developing a collective concurrence on this social media platform, the mayor and three council members intentionally deprive the public of information of which they are entitled to, and therefore they have committed a misdemeanor violation of California law. I refer to Government Code Section 54959 that provides that each member of the legislative body who attends a meeting for that legislative body, where action is taken in violation of any provision of this chapter, and where the member intends to deprive the public of information which the member knows or has reason to know, the public is entitled under this chapter, is guilty of a misdemeanor. Since the city is your client, not the individual council members, proceeding with this requested special meeting regarding a topic in which Mayor Sosa and council members Fromeda, Ortiz, and Pemberton have already reached a collective concurrence, that would be a facilitation of a crime. Accordingly, I was asked to be advised no later than 4 o'clock on Monday whether it would be the, whether it remains the position of the city attorney that the topic discussed by a majority of the council on Instagram is within the city of Downey's subject-matter jurisdiction. So, so I was asked to, for them to respond, and I sought conflict counsel, so that I could comply with my obligations to report this matter to the appropriate government authorities, such as the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office, the California Attorney General's Office, and the California Political Fair Practices Commission, as we are-
Order, we'll maintain order, please. Let him finish his statement, please. Let him finish his statement. We won't have any interruptions from the crowd.
Please be advised that I consider proceeding with such a meeting to be unlawful and intentional violation of the law. Signed, Councilmember Mario Trujillo. So I'll be submitting, in response, the city manager did respond. I received an email Monday, September 15th, at 1:36. I'll refer that as to the second, second document. I'll be submitting three documents, Madam Clerk. The response is, "Good afternoon, Councilmember Trujillo. Thank you for your correspondence attached below. It's the city's position that there's been no violation of the Ralph M. Brown Act based on the statements provided in your letter. From the balance of the letter, I believe you're aware of the procedures after this type alleged violation, which are beyond the scope of the advice that he could furnish in this context, in his capacity as counsel for the city, respectfully speaking, meaning that I could seek my own counsel. The subject of censures inherent power of a city council that may be initiated exclusively by the legislative body if desired by the body. With respect to your request for city-provided counsel in connection with any consideration of the possibility to censor against you, that is a request you should make of the Downey City Council in such proceedings as in Government Code Section 995.4. A public entity but is not required to provide that defense proceeding brought by the public entity." So at this point, for your consideration, Mayor, I am seeking conflict counsel to be afforded to me on the city's dime, as I need to-
Order. Order, please, order, order.
Document number three, I want to submit the agenda posted for today, which I find to be defamatory in a couple of sections. Number one, consideration of censure of council member Trujillo, that the city council considered the censure based on a video posting made on his Instagram concerning the shooting death of Charlie Kirk. I want to state for the record that I have never posted a video regarding Mr. Kirk. I am aware of a video that's being promoted on social media that I find to be personally offensive. I, it's tragic that that video is being shown, but I never showed a video. This agenda is incorrect, to say the least, and I find it to be defamatory as it is inferring that I was promoting that video, which I never did. In addition to that-
Members of the public, I do have to stress that this is a business meeting tonight, despite whatever may be on the agenda, and the city expects that it be conducted with civility and decorum and respect for all involved in the meeting. Again, I must emphasize that anyone who engages in behavior that disrupts this meeting or interferes with the conduct of the city council's business tonight will be subject to removal after one warning. Thank you in advance for respecting these protocols. It's not my intent to keep interjecting to this effect, but the outbursts and the noise-making has now occurred at least three times. Thank you.
And I'll add to that, we, we need your assistance. This is, there's obviously a lot of emotions on both sides of the aisle here, and we need your help in being able to conduct this business meeting in a, in a good manner. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. In your memo, Mayor, I would like to point out in the recommendation that there continues to be discussion about a video. Again, I'm not sure, and most importantly, I'm not sure that the public is aware of what video you are speaking of, and the intent of our agenda should be to inform the public so you can inform yourself of what we will be discussing, in case you're interested. Again, I find this agenda to be maligning and defamatory. So with that said, I want to thank you for allowing me to make my record, Mr. Mayor, and I will hereby submit these three separate documents to the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now call to order the special city council meeting. The time is now 4:16. City Clerk Duarte, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Fromeda-
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz-
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo-
Here.
Mayor Pemberton-
Present.
And Mayor Sosa.
Present.
Now is the time for public comment regarding special meeting agenda items. Oh, sorry. City Attorney would like to make some comments beforehand?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be as brief as possible. Just for the record, I do want to note, as councilmember Trujillo indicated, that he expressed his intent to convey or communicate his procedural objections to this meeting. His objections were procedural in nature and not substantive. It is correct. The contents of the letter that he read, that he advised me that it was his belief that this, there was a Brown Act violation in reference or based on the allegations in the letter that he addressed to me. I replied to him in the timeframe stated, indicating that it was the city's position that there was no Brown Act violation based on the allegations in his letter, and advised him with respect to his request for conflict counsel as well. But I just wanted to note that for the record. Thank you, Councilmember Trujillo. And also, just to provide a brief overview of tonight's proceedings for the mayor, the council, and members of the public. You may not necessarily be aware of what the nature of these proceedings are. It's not something that is, is done at one of our meetings very frequently, but I do think it's important to note some basic procedure and overview of what, what can be expected tonight. Tonight's proceedings are about the consideration of censure of councilmember Trujillo, as further described in the agenda memo. It's important to note that no action has been taken at this point, and that this special meeting has been called to consider what, if any action will be taken. All substantive deliberation will be conducted by the city council. There will be no report or recommendation, recommendation by city staff. My role will be limited to facilitating the process in a procedural manner, if and when necessary. This decision is entirely within the discretion of the city council and must be conducted in open session rather than closed session, under the law. Censure is defined in the law as a formal reprimand or expression of disapproval by a legislative body of one of its members regarding conduct that it finds unacceptable. The council may simply state its disapproval and/or impose a limited number of sanctions. To be clear, however, the council may not remove any one member as a consequence of censure. Following public comment, which the mayor will introduce shortly, we'll begin with the presentation by the mayor, who has called the special meeting. The council member proposed for censure will then have the opportunity to respond and provide any additional information for the council's consideration. Neither shall be limited in time, but should not be repetitious, nor digress from the issues before the council has contemplated by the city's own meeting rules. Next will be deliberation by the city council. If the council finds that a censure is justified for reasons stated on the record, a simple majority is required to impose censure. If the council votes to censure, it may direct the preparation of a written resolution incorporating the basis of censure to be adopted at a subsequent meeting. In the alternative, the council may decide upon some lesser action, or other action, or no action at all. For the audience and all involved in today's proceedings, and as yet another reminder, please be aware that this is a business meeting, where as always, it is important to observe civility, decorum, and efficiency in accordance with the city's meeting rules. Thank you for your attention, and with that, I will turn things over to the mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney Funk. Now is the time for public comment regarding special meeting agenda items.
The city council will now take public comment on agenda, consent calendar, and non-agenda items. If you did not receive a number card and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room to be issued a number card by city staff. We will be calling blue number cards for the public comment period. Before we begin the public comment period, we would like to remind members of the audience that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Copies of the meeting rules are located in the back of the chambers. Members of the audience and speakers who violate these rules and cause a disruption will receive one warning and then may be removed from the meeting. Violations of the rules of decorum for council meetings may also result in an administrative fine under the municipal code, or citation for a misdemeanor under Penal Code Section 403. The city council acknowledges the right of the public to address issues that are within the city's jurisdiction, and invites the public to do so during the city council meeting. However, this right must be balanced with the need of the city council to conduct the public business in a fair and efficient manner, free from disruption or disturbance. We expect that everyone who participates in today's meeting, from the members of the council here on the dais, to staff, to the members of the public in attendance, do so with respect and dignity. Please refrain from using profanity, name-calling, or behaving in a way that disrupts this meeting. This includes yelling, whistling, booing, screaming, and any other outbursts that disrupts or disturbs the meeting. Any conduct that interferes with or disrupts persons who are addressing the city council. Any conduct that interferes with- Any conduct that interferes with or disrupts council members while they are speaking. Any other conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. And attacks of a personal nature on city staff or city council members that have no connection to agenda items or non-agenda items. We remind speakers that your comments must be addressed to the mayor and not to any other council member, city staff, or the audience.
City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written public comment to be incorporated into the record?
Yes, Mayor, we did. After posting the special meeting agenda, we received two written public comments in favor of the censure and two written public comments in opposition of the censure.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to receive and file written public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
Are you on presentation? The motion is approved with Councilmember Trujillo abstaining from the motion.
City Clerk Duarte, we should have that fixed before we move on. We'll take a quick pause. We'll take a quick, I don't know, two, three-minute pause. How many speakers have taken a number?
Hold on, Mayor. We have a total of 47 at this time.
Forty-seven, okay. Based on the number of speakers, each speaker will have two minutes to address the city council. I remind all speakers, you must remain seated until your number is called. And please, as a reminder, direct all your comments to me. Speaker number one, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and fellow citizens of Downey. My name is Christian. I'm a proud lifelong resident of Downey. I was born here, I grew up here, and still live here today. I care deeply about this city and the values we stand for, which is why I cannot stay silent tonight. Councilmember Mario Trujillo's Instagram story about the assassination of Charlie Kirk was not just offensive, it was disgraceful. At a time when a man was murdered, a man who stood for faith, family, and freedom, Mr. Trujillo chose to use his platform to insult, demean, and mock. That is not leadership, that is cruelty. His post goes directly against the core values of the city of Downey: integrity, commitment, respect, teamwork, engagement, passion, and excellence. For a sitting council member to speak about someone's death with callousness insults every person who values human life, free speech, and basic decency. Worse, it encouraged others to spread the same hate on social media, making light of murder and deepening the division tearing this country apart. Across the nation, people who posted similar comments about Charlie Kirk's assassination have been fired from their jobs. Why should a council member who represents an entire city be held to a lower standard? This council has a duty to stand up for what is right. Censoring Councilmember Trujillo is not about politics, it is about morality. It is about showing that Downey is a city where human life matters, where tragedy is met with compassion, not mockery. As a Christian man, I forgive Mario Trujillo for his heartless post, but forgiveness does not mean there should be no consequences. I urge you to take action tonight. Send a clear message that Downey will not tolerate elected officials who spread division and disrespect. Charlie Kirk stood for unity through truth, for civil discourse, and for courage. Honor that legacy by standing up for decency and for the values that unite us, not divide us. Hold Mario Trujillo accountable and make an example of this behavior so it never happens again. Thank you, and may God bless you all.
Yes, if we can ask, we have a lot of speakers tonight, 47 in total. If we can minimize any type of reaction between speakers so we can move forward through the process, thank you. Speaker number two, please come forward.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak. It definitely won't be as graceful and as nice as that last speaker. That was great. That was great. What I'm here to say is, as a lifelong citizen of Downey, that does not represent me. When my relatives called me from Boston to see that they had read that on a Downey site, that's 3,000 miles away, they're thinking that Downey is that.
Please keep your...
We are not that.
Sir, please, please direct your comments to me, please.
Yes. We are not that.
No, please direct your comments towards me, please.
Okay, I'm telling you, we are not that. We are better than that. That is division. And those in this room that can support that are ridiculous. There's no, at all, love and caring in that statement. There's, all of what was said by the councilman earlier was a bunch of bull, a bunch of blah, 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 blah. Attorney, I don't care about attorneys. They mean nothing. Mean nothing. He wrote that, I don't care if he wrote that on toilet paper, he could have wrote it in the freaking sky. He wrote it on his own account, doesn't matter if it was a city account. It came from his heart. That is not me. That is not my neighbors. That is not any of the people that I coached my whole life at the park here for Downey in girls' softball, Pop Warner, Little League. That represents none of those people. How this man is even here and not already fired and gone, the rules are crazy. I could go on about some real, real touchy stuff, and I told myself before I got here I wasn't going to touch it, but by that blah, blah, blah crap, what about if everybody hated homosexuals?
Thank you, thank you. That end your comment, please. Thank you.
People don't kill homosexuals.
No, that's enough, that's enough, sir. We'll have order.
And you're lucky they don't kill homosexuals.
Your time is done, sir. Your time is done. And again, I will remind the crowd, we will not have any outbursts. No, we will not have any outbursts in the crowd.
Yeah.
That's enough. No...
Uh, Ms...
Huh?
Uh...
Sir.
That's fine.
Sir. That's enough, that's enough.
I don't represent homosexuals.
Oh my God.
No! Stop it, stop it! Not your bloody, dirty...
He's... Lisette, he's being removed. Lisette, he's being... This is your first warning. He's being... Lisette, he's being removed. This is your first warning.
You're a breathless... How dare you!
This is your first warning, Lisette.
Calm down.
I think she's okay. It probably was just if she can...
You already warned all of us. Already warned us. She's got to go too.
Huh? Yeah.
Members of the public, please retain and maintain order here as we preserve our next speaker.
Sergeant-at-Arms, Sergeant-at-Arms, please have her removed, please. Please have Ms. Rivera removed. Thank you. She's been... Speaker number three, please come forward. Speaker number three, please come forward.
I am honored in the sense that I serve as my community every day. It's shame on you.
Good evening.
I have all the hatred and divisions that A W has caused.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm a lifelong resident of Downey. I'll try to keep it cool, as cool as I can be. I don't agree with what the council member posted and the timeliness of it, but I have to say, I find it pretty ironic that people who claim to be advocates of free speech are now claiming, are now demanding that he be fired and he be forced to resign. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying, you can criticize him, you can critique him all you want, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to address you. You can criticize and critique him all you want. I do believe in free speech. I do believe we all have the right to praise or condemn. But the thing about free speech, I have a quote, I don't know who said it, but the thing about, the funny thing about free speech is, everyone supports it until someone says something they don't like. And as far as I can tell from his post, he never actually praised the shooter, he never celebrated the murder of Charlie Kirk. You can claim it was untimely, I believe it was untimely, and I believe it was, to a degree, inappropriate. But should he lose his job over it, as other people are, I don't think so. I think that we should uphold our values of free speech, and it looks to me like people want to punish him, not because he celebrated the murder, which he did not. People want to punish him because he does not believe Charlie Kirk was a good person. He said he was a wicked person, and he also said that he would not mourn him. And if you want to know why some people would not mourn Mr. Kirk, I would suggest everyone just look at what he said about Muslims and Palestinians and black people.
Let him speak, let him speak. We will not have any eruptions.
So, again, that doesn't make the murder okay, it was a abhorrent thing, and I wish Mr. Kirk was still alive, but should he be fired for it, he didn't even celebrate the murder. So, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. So, again, guys, we have well over 40 speakers today. I will remind you, listen, there's a lot of emotions on both sides. Help us, help you get through this. One at a time, keep it to yourselves, you'll get a chance to speak. Speaker number four, please come forward.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not here so much to speak about differences of opinion or ideological differences, but really to speak about the hate, intolerance, and disrespect that was included in the post of Councilmember Trujillo. What struck me about what happened was how easily this could have been avoided. There were no expectations for Councilmember to say anything at all, yet you made a conscious decision to demonize a Christian man who lost his life having an open dialogue with young people on a college campus. That, to me, is reprehensible. It followed with an apology that rang hollow and was devoid of any meaning. The truth is, seems like you have tolerance for only those people who agree with you. Last year, I know there's an issue that caused some divisiveness among the city council where, regarding the pride flag, you had one opinion and council disagreed with you on that. You immediately labeled the council as being associated with a hate group. Your intolerance for that and hypocrisy is astounding. We live in times where conversation and dialogue between each other is at a premium. We really do. It's during these times where we depend on our elected officials and community leaders to take the lead in fostering a sense of tolerance and progress as we navigate through our differences. You demonstrate a shocking lack of any of these leadership abilities.
Please keep your comments towards me.
Councilmember Trujillo demonstrates a shocking lack of leadership qualities that our citizens depend on and our council members need to possess. True leaders elevate those around them. They empower their followers to achieve success. The opposite of a leader is not a follower, but a pessimist. Councilmember Trujillo is a pessimist who has rendered himself impotent in achieving any of the goals of a council member in this city. I urge Councilmember Trujillo to resign on this council and allow the city to move forward.
Thank you. Speaker number five, please come forward.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. Last Wednesday on September 10th, a man named Charlie Kirk was assassinated in front of thousands of college students and actually in front of the entire world. He was murdered in cold blood, no qualifiers, no stipulations, it was the end of a life in the most violent way imaginable. But we are not here today to discuss who Charlie Kirk was, but rather who Councilman Mario Trujillo is. While many of us were mourning the death of Charlie Kirk, Councilman Trujillo was logging into his social media accounts to claim that he would not mourn the wicked. Now, is it is true that Councilman Trujillo enjoys his First Amendment right of free speech and will not be prosecuted for his flippant disrespectful words? However, he is not a free agent. He is an elected official, voted into office to represent every single resident in the city of Downey. So when Councilman Trujillo speaks at a political event and claims that California was the 48th state admitted into the country, he's not just speaking for himself, he makes us all look stupid. And when he proclaims that he is ashamed of being an American, he makes us all look unpatriotic. And when Councilman Trujillo posts on social media, like he did last week, he is by nature of his position in this city, speaking for all of us. I cannot tolerate Councilman Trujillo to continue to represent me in this way. He does not speak for me, he does not speak for us. Councilman Trujillo is supposed to be a public servant. The only person he was serving last week with his Instagram post was himself. He must be held accountable for his words, and he must be made to understand that his words have consequences. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speaker number six, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here to express my agreement that, at the minimum, Mr. Mario Trujillo should be censured. I wish that more could happen. I actually wish he would resign from his position, but I know he'll never resign, as Mr. Trujillo does not have the character to protect the people of Downey. Mario invites controversy, he causes it, and he has harmed the city of Downey in the past. When I first read the headline that a Downey city council member had angered thousands of people on social media, which I don't think you should expect to have privacy on social media, there's no expectation of privacy on social media, I had no doubt that it was Mario Trujillo. And I was right, and as I read what he wrote, I felt physically ill. First, how can someone think so coldly about another human? Secondly, how can someone take the time to open a social media app, type out a vile message, and actually hit send? Thirdly, how can someone think that a vague, self-serving apology that blamed the victim would be acceptable? And finally, how can this person, Mario Trujillo, remain in his position of serving the people that he has intentionally hurt, offended, and belittled? I have no faith that Mario Trujillo can continue to serve the fine people of Downey. He has very blatantly stated for all the world to see that he does not value the life of Charlie Kirk. Charlie Kirk is no different than you, is no different than me or anybody else. I am convinced by Mario himself that he does not respect patriotic Americans or practicing Christians. He likes the Americans that hate America, and he likes the Christians that don't speak their mind. Serving on Downey's city council is a privilege.
Speaker number seven, please come forward.
Real quick, I want to take a minute to give my condolences to the poor man that was murdered in front of our library the other day. I feel so deeply saddened for his family. I feel so deeply saddened for his family. And instead of spending time on that, we are now spending more money, wasting more stuff, on a stupid comment that was done in the heat of a moment to get followers, to, I don't know what the heck happened. I actually defended your First Amendment right on Facebook.
Please keep your comments towards me, please.
Okay. I defended it to a point where I believe in the First Amendment. I fully believe in it, I've been in the military, I've served, but I don't believe in the first stupidity. And I don't support stupidity, and I work with a lot of stupid people, because I work at Edison. And I just want you to know, I don't hate anybody, I'm just disappointed. That's it, I can't say anymore. I'm so deeply saddened that, I'm glad that your true colors came out. I'm very grateful for that, because now I don't have to shine a light on you, I know what your colors are now.
Comments towards me, please.
Okay, I didn't know I had to stare, okay. But like I said, I'm just disappointed in the city, and now we're going to have to spend more money on defending the city against somebody that was stupid. For a moment of stupidity, it's going to cost probably half a million dollars. I would like to be stupid, if you're going to give me half a million dollars, I'll, I'll fall on the floor. That's how stupid this whole situation is. The bottom line is, I could drink a whole bottle of Metamucil, and I still wouldn't give a crap about the situation here. This is sad, it's pathetic, and you're a better man than that, he's a better man, sorry. He's a better man than that. And you guys are all good people, so I'm sorry that this has happened, but I don't want to pay tax dollars for stupidity anymore. I can't afford it, we all can't afford it. But you know what, God bless you guys, you're still good people.
Thank you. Speaker number eight, please come forward.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. It's hard, it's hard to, to be here today, because I feel the same way as Mr. Willhite. I have so much love and respect for all of you guys, even Claudia, Claudia and I, we get along most, most times. But, but I do think that the comments that council member Trujillo made were insensitive. I really do, I really do. But I also believe in, in freedom of speech. I really do believe in it, and I see the comments from a bunch of people, you know, all over social media regarding the matter, both, you know, insensitive and people that are very sensitive. Me personally, in my family, we've suffered gun violence, we've, you know, we had loss because of gun violence. And so, any comments about gun violence, for me, they're very sensitive, and I don't like them, I don't like them. But, I do believe in the First Amendment, and I also believe that there's more important things that should be discussed in this chamber. You know, council member Fromeda has talked about keeping partisan politics out of the city, and I agree with that, that's one of the things that I really do agree with. Another thing is, like, right now, in the comments you were saying, Mr. Mayor, you kept saying, you know, both sides of the aisle, we're, we're all Downey. I'm sitting next to Republicans, I'm sitting next to Democrats, but we're all Downey, we all love this city. And I think we should focus on, on things that are really affecting our city right now, like the fact that somebody lost their life just outside of this chamber. I think that that's more important. So, I understand the reason for this meeting, I understand why, but I honestly think that it's, it's a big waste of time, there's more important things that you guys should be focusing on while you guys are representing us, okay? I love you all, and you guys are amazing people, right? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Speaker number nine, please come forward.
Good evening. Okay, I read the, what Mr. Trujillo wrote down on his Instagram, and I find that very offensive, and his insi, insi, oh, I can't pronounce, insidiously goes against Charlie, goes against his wife, his family, his friends, his non-friends like me, okay? I, I want to say, you know, I don't want to be facetious, okay? But it seems that once Mr. Trujillo realized how many negative feedback he got, all of a sudden he changed his, his phrases, the way he wrote things, and I believe he did this, but he, when he realized that the horse had left the barn, okay? I think that second post he put on Instagram should have been the first post, not, that should have been the first, not the one he's put at first, okay? And, I don't know, Charlie, I don't, you know, obviously I don't know him, but he was a Catholic, a Christian, never wanted to harm anybody, okay? And, you know, it kind of hurts because you don't, you feel for somebody who ends up that way, okay? And I just want to say that this city, I don't believe ever had that problem, a situation like this. And if people, our, our council people are going to make these comments, I believe they shouldn't be in the council, okay? And thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening.
Would you like, there you go.
Oh, you can hear me, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Okay. I wrote something down, so I didn't forget it. Eighty-four, you know? I want to say good evening to you, Mayor, and to all our council people. I, my words are going to be few, but they're from my heart. I don't care if you are at your wit's end, where you can't think about where our country is, or if you can't find kind words to offer, to condone such an act is grossly despicable. I don't care if you have been railing in all things Magnum movement, calling to avenge this murderous act, and amplifying the veteran, great hatefulness of it, and politically demonizing, throwing your, your disagreement with this is only dangerous, it's not only dangerous, it's irresponsible, and it is indisputably vile. I will never believe that this is our norm. Stay with me now. My mind tried to figure this out. My feelings are big. My spirit has been largely broken, but it has a resounding in this with disgust. This is not the person to lead our city. I'm ashamed that he even lives here. Resign, Mario.
Thank you. Speaker number eleven, please come forward.
Good evening. Good evening. Good afternoon, Mayor Sosa, Mayor Pro temp, Pemberton, and city council members, as well as city manager and city attorney. My name is, sorry, I've been a Downey resident for over twenty-eight years, and I want to thank you for holding this special meaning. It's unfortunate that council member Trujillo's actions on September tenth have caused all of us to be here today. I recognize that public scrutiny comes with the territory of being a public servant and an elected official. That is a direct quote from councilman Trujillo to the Downey Patriot on December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. The article was in reference to a plea deal that he allegedly made while he worked as a special advisor to then District Attorney George Gascon. This controversy began just shortly after Mr. Trujillo was elected to the city council in November of two thousand and twenty. This certainly led to many people questioning his integrity and motives. Today, we are here because a great amount of people, not only in Downey, but in our nation, are questioning the same. We are questioning council member Trujillo's ability to properly represent the needs and concerns of his constituents. The effect of council member Trujillo's irresponsible behavior is deeply troubling. His capricious nature and immature attitude hurts our ability to attract quality businesses to our city, and I urge all of you to please censure council member Trujillo.
Speaker number twelve, please come forward.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brandon St. Gilliam, I'm a lifelong resident of Downey and a proud alumni of Turning Point USA, Cal State Long Beach. Over the last, as what I saw from what Trujillo posted, I took it personal, so it was important for me to come down here. As someone who has been going to Turning Point events for the last few years, whether it's here in SoCal, or even at convention in Florida, Arizona, or even Detroit, I've had the honor of seeing Charlie Kirk multiple times in person, three occasions which I got to volunteer at his speaking events, shake his hand, and take a picture with him. Last time I got to see Charlie in person was at the Student Action Summit in July, where I got to do the unthinkable and ask Tom Homan a question. Because of the movement Charlie has made, to this day I've made more friends at Turning Point than I ever would as a college student. And it's a shame that a week ago today, an evil man decided to kill him simply for not agreeing with his views and was brainwashed by leftist ideology like Charlie Kirk is a Nazi fascist, yet he took a bullet just for using his First Amendment right to have a conversation with people who disagree with him. Erica Kirk said it best, "The evildoers responsible for Charlie's assassination have no idea what they've done. If you thought his mission was powerful before, you have no idea what you've unleashed across the country." As of today, there have been over fifty-four thousand requests to start Turning Point chapters in both high schools and colleges combined, which is why I not only should Trujillo should be censured, which is a first step of accountability, but I also believe recalling him out of office is the best way to keep the city's reputation in a good standing, not just for the residents, but the entire globe, as they continue to mourn the loss of someone who has influenced millions of young people like myself. I want to thank Charlie Kirk for creating a movement that gave me a voice, new friends from all across the country, and a community that welcomed me with open arms and celebrate how great it is to be a proud American patriot. Charlie, I hope I made you proud.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, your time is up. Speaker number thirteen, please come forward. Good evening.
I've been living in Downey for over sixty-one years, and I love this city, been here forever. And I understand free speech, I understand it very well. However, free speech does have consequences, and we need to make sure that Trujillo understands that. He's, he was elected as a council member, and he should be held accountable. And I don't have a whole lot to say, I just want to say, I, I wish he wasn't just censured, I wish I wouldn't have voted for him. However, it is what it is, but I, I would ask for his resignation.
Thank you. Speaker number fourteen, please come forward. Speaker number fifteen, please come forward.
Good evening. Good evening. So, I understand the free speech right that we all have, and I'm here tonight to share how Mr. Trujillo's crude statements impacted me personally. I am the mother of a Focus missionary, serving at the University of Utah, thirty minutes away from Utah Valley University. For those that don't know, what Focus stands for is Fellowship of Catholic Universities, and they send young adults to campuses across the country to walk with students in their faith, share truth, and invite them to encounter Christ. Last week, after Charlie Kirk's murder, when the assassin was still on the loose, I felt anguish and fear. Reading your post, Mr. Trujillo, celebrating his death sent me into a really dark place. And why? Because my son and his teammates do exactly what Charlie did. Several times a week, under Dominican priests, they set up a table and dialogue with students about Jesus. As a Catholic mother, I am very proud of my son, but I'm also deeply afraid. Mr. Trujillo's celebration of his killing doesn't just show disdain for someone you disagree with, it signals that such violence is acceptable and that it can be repeated. Celebrating the murder of a Christian family man simply because of his beliefs places him in the shameful company of those who once celebrated the assassinations of Martin Luther King and Harvey Milk. I expected better of Mr. Trujillo. He calls himself a Catholic, yet rejoicing in the killing of a Christian man, that is not Catholic, that is not leadership, that is hate and division. So I ask you, if God forbid, anything were to happen to my son and his teammate, would you also celebrate that too? Would you send a tweet like that too? I cannot hate him, I cannot hate him for his actions.
Thank you, your time is up. Time is up. Speaker number sixteen, please come forward.
Good evening. Hi, good evening. My name is Sabrina Sarmiento, and I'm a proud resident of Downey. I'm here tonight in response to Mr. Trujillo's recent post, which read, "No one mourns the wicked." Coming soon after the public, so soon after the public execution of Charlie Kirk, those words were not only insensitive, they were cruel and dangerous. This is personal for me. The man I love has lived and attended Downey's schools his entire life, up until just a few months ago, when he left to serve as a Focus missionary at the University of Utah, only thirty minutes from Utah Valley University, where this tragedy occurred. Focus missionaries dedicate their lives to accompanying college students, mentoring them, and helping them grow in virtue and faith. In many ways, their mission is very similar to Charlie Kirk's work of engaging young people in universities' public squares with differing opinions. Because of Mr. Trujillo's words, I now fear for his safety. And as someone who runs a Catholic women's Bible study and participates in another, both here in Downey, I also fear for these groups. If a leader in our own city publicly indirectly mocks the murder of a Christian man, what message does that send? That people like us, who live out our Christian faith in public, are next to be indirectly celebrated if we are harmed for sharing truth? Mr. Trujillo calls himself a Catholic, but Catholic Christian teaching is clear. Genesis one twenty-seven said, "God created mankind in his image; in the image of God he created them." To celebrate or minimize the killing of another human being directly contradicts that truth. It is not compassion, it is not justice, and it is certainly not leadership. Downey deserves leaders who build bridges, not fuel division. Leaders who uphold dignity, not mock it. Mr. Trujillo's actions have made it clear, he is not equipped to continue in office. That is why I stand here tonight to call for his recall. We will not forget Mr. Trujillo's words, we will hold him accountable, and we will choose leaders who embody the values of our society.
Thank you. Speaker number seventeen, please come forward. Good evening. Thank you for your service, Mr. Squire.
Lee Squire, Vietnam War veteran, federal civil rights advocate, Downey High School in nineteen sixty-seven. Good evening, Mayor and city council, excluding Trujillo. I have requested TPUSA to have a chapter at Downey High School, and I have notified the Downey High School district. This chapter will be supported by members of the American Legion for God and Country. Two, so long as profanity is not used in a threatening manner, it is protected speech. The focus is on threatening language. The purpose is threats, not content that you have nothing to, to control. Thank you, Claudia Formida, for standing up as to the assassination of Charlie Kirk. We of the US military support you and God bless you. Charlie Kirk was assassinated while exercising First Amendment freedoms. He was shot in the neck to sign his freedom of speech. He was assassinated exercising First Amendment freedoms, which is a direct upon, a directed attack upon two symbols of the blood we shed for this country, we, the US military, not you politicians. you politicians. The American flag and the Purple Heart Medal. That blood was shed on that, I guarantee you, you've woken up somebody you never should have, and I'm talking about my generation. I find it appalling to celebrate also the murder of the son of the parents of Charlie Kirk. It's not just him, oh yeah, let's celebrate the murder of their son? If your comments are true, you are nothing but a Judas. May God have mercy on your soul.
Speaker number 18, please come forward. And please, again, please remember to direct your comments towards me. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Sosa and the rest of the council members. I am here, I dreamed of coming to live in the city of Downey and since 2001, and then thank God I moved here in 2019. I have defended some of you through social media in the past when you guys have been attacked, and this time. I don't know Mr. Trujillo personally, but like some of the members that are here, the community members, I don't think that this meeting was necessary. He might have made a comment on his personal social media. It is not, I couldn't tell you whether it was reference to the killing of Charlie Kirk or not, but it was his personal social media. It wasn't part, it wasn't the official council social media. But just to, and again, I don't agree with the way that Mr. Kirk left this world, and I don't think political violence has a place anywhere in America, but to say that Mr. Trujillo was celebrating his death is disingenuous. Let me just go ahead and remind you of some of the phrases that Mr. Kirk did say when he was alive. If I see a black pilot, I'm going to be like, boy-
Let her speak, let her speak. Go ahead.
I hope he's qualified and he wasn't selected as affirmative action. If you're a WNBA postsmoking black lesbian, do you regret treating, do you get treated better than a United States Marine? Mr. Kirk advocated for white, for white race. He used to talk about affirmative action, he used to be very nasty to the female gender. So, I really don't think that this meeting was really needed, and I think that if you all call yourselves a Christian person, you guys need to stop throwing stones. If anything, I would have had a conversation with Mr. Trujillo and saying your comments were insensitive, but not this whole show.
Just before I call the next speaker, guys, it's really important that we allow each other to speak. Okay, we're not even halfway through the amount of speakers, and there's going to be some deliberation after that. Help us get through this. Give each speaker the time allotted to speak, regardless of their views and their words, please. Speaker number 19, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Disrespectfully, his excuse is a cheap cop-out. He added context by sharing a series of posts relating to Charlie Kirk, and I have the screen recordings to prove it. And after watching him threaten legal action against city members for representing their constituents, I hope he resigns. We didn't ask him to agree with Charlie Kirk, we didn't ask him to feel sorry for Kirk, we only asked that our local representatives value human life, regardless of political affiliation. And we couldn't even get that. On September 10th, after the tragic assassination of Charlie Kirk, council member Trujillo posted a series of messages on his Instagram accounts that no public representative should ever publish. One of them read, "No one mourns the wicked," followed by sharing a post that purposely misrepresented what Kirk said. The timing of his post dehumanizes a victim and can be interpreted as implying his life had less value because of his political beliefs. Posts like these normalize hatred towards people for disagreeing, and that is unacceptable from anybody, but especially from someone elected to represent this city. And do not insult our intelligence by pretending this is just a free speech issue, because it's not. He can say whatever he wants to say whenever he wants, but not as our representative. Apparently, it's not the first time he has acted against his constituents' best interest. I was, I was sent a screenshot this morning of Mario Trujillo using derogatory words like "nopal" in reference to Latinos who do not share his perspectives. The screenshot is on my social media. We, the people of Downey, deserve better. We deserve leaders who protect rights, not leaders who mock them. We deserve representatives who build trust, not who inflame division. This city and this community deserve more than symbolic action. Council member Trujillo's words have disqualified him from representing Downey, and I hope everyone else will support a recall. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Donna, thank you for having us. I've lived in Downey for 56 years. I went to Downey High, raised all my kids, my grandkids went to Downey. And, you know, I hear thoughts of comments about, you know, my own private social media account. Actions of anyone in authority affect everybody, personally and business. You know, he mentioned his account as if it didn't matter, but then went on to mention that other people's posts about him did matter, and all of a sudden there need to be lawsuits. Maybe he could have started with compassion towards the people that are mourning due to the loss of Charlie Kirk, due to the fact that family members and young kids, you know, not only his children, but all the people attending the college that witnessed the brutal murder. Even compassion for the fact that we just had a murder here outside of, you know, City Hall, you know, something, you know, something compassionate would have been nice, but instead all I heard was, "Me, me, 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 my lawyer, my this, I this, I that." And he feels that he's been judged maybe unjustly due to his post. Charlie Kirk was judged unjustly. He was not anti, he was not for hate. I'm not anti-hate. Charlie didn't hate gays, he did not hate, you know, he didn't hate anyone. He wasn't prejudiced, he wasn't anti-black, he definitely supported all the different communities, but he wanted people judged on their merit, not because of their skin color. We should be able to share our thoughts, all of us.
Before I call the next speaker, if you know your number's next, please go ahead for the sake of time, just go ahead and line up right behind, right in front of that desk in the back. Speaker number 21, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor. I want to add my voice to those who are asking for the recall of Mr. Trujillo. No one mourns the wicked. Every one of us has the right to say that. However, if you say that, even though it's on a private Instagram or private social secure, or social media program, basically, you as a representative of the city give the opinion that possibly it may be reflected on the city of Downey. Therefore, because of that, I truly request Mr. Trujillo to resign. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 22, please come forward.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for hosting this. My name is Ruth Sanchez. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Downey. I'm also a Christian and conservative, I love this city. I'm stating this with honor that Mr. Trujillo's position demands not the regard his actions deserve. No one here cares about his defense. We care about the spirit and the poor leadership in which he made that comment, and the poor leadership that he displayed today in his defense. A good leader, a good civic leader owns the mess they make. We can agree that because of the First Amendment, there's no law prohibiting Mr. Trujillo from expressing his opinion. He verily clearly expressed it, we've heard it today. I say this humbly, that seeing Mr. Trujillo today, his demeanor seems to stand by his egregious statement with his cockiness and his pride. Is it too much to expect our public leaders to own their mess and own it well? We're here today to discuss accountability. Elected officials don't only have legal obligations to uphold, and I'm referring to the jargon of legal defense that Mr. Trujillo provided at great length at the beginning of this session. Elected officials have ethical responsibilities, and they have social responsibilities to the people that they represent. To represent someone else, to go to work and speak on their behalf, and to act on someone else's behalf is a high call, and it comes with weight and responsibility. Over 800,000 people read that post, they saw it, and unfortunately, it represents Mr. Trujillo, but I asked the city council today, it cannot represent Downey. We must care about the loss of human life, including the precious life that was taken just a few yards from here. Mr. Trujillo's poor leadership and ethics, and civic ethics, and poor values were on clear display in his social media post. No regard for all of his constituents, no regard for loss of life, and my request is to censure him with the highest severity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Speaker number 23, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, mine's going to be pretty short. I take this very personal, I am a conservative, I am a woman of faith, a Christian, and I read to my kids at night. Charlie Kirk's children are gonna, he's not gonna be able to read to his children, his children are gonna read about him. And it's sad. I do believe in free speech. And it saddens me how somebody that we elected, public, right, he works for the public, posted something so horrible on social media, now he doesn't share the beliefs of faith maybe that Charlie Kirk did. And that's okay, we all have the right to believe whatever we want, right? But I, it doesn't represent Downey when somebody says, "We do not mourn the wicked," or "I don't mourn the wicked." However, he posted, he's calling Charlie Kirk wicked. The group of people Charlie Kirk represented, is he calling wicked? And I don't believe that Trujillo's comment and what he posted represents me as a Downey citizen, and I don't think it represents too many people here. I do believe he should be recalled or resigned, because his message really has caused a lot of division within the city, as we saw earlier.
Thank you, thank you. Speaker number 24, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, council, and good evening, residents of Downey. I don't have anything prepared, I'm just going to speak from the heart, but firstly, I want to send my condolences to Ray LaFonte, who was senselessly murdered right in our footsteps, and also send my condolences to Erica Kirk and all the Turning Point family. I also want to thank Mayor Sosa, Councilmember Frometta, Councilmember Ortiz, and Councilmember Pemberton, thank you for speaking up, thank you for showing true leadership. I also want to thank the residents of Downey, because it's important that we're here. Like many residents of Downey, it's been a dream for us to live in Downey, and we're finally here, and it's important that we take time out of our day to speak up for what's right. This isn't a partisan issue, this isn't an ideological issue, it's a common sense issue. It's an issue about humanity and about compassion. That's all that's at stake here. And I will take one objection to a comment that Mr. Trujillo said in his letter, when he said this does, his personal post does not concern Downey. Yes, it does concern Downey, because if you do not have empathy and compassion for a person that was speaking his mind, how are you going to have compassion and empathy for people that share the same values of faith, of country, of unity? So it does concern Downey. And I would also like to say, I only have a few more minutes left, but look, it's not too late. I'm directing my comment at you, Mr. Sosa, but it's also, hopefully Mr. Trujillo can hear it, it's not too late. Hopefully, you can just have common sense, apologize. You mentioned a lot of sections in that speech that you gave. Where's the section for common sense? Where's the section for what's good for Downey? What's good for Downey is that we focus on the issues that are literally at our footsteps, where chaos and violence is at our footsteps, and we can't let them in.
Thank you.
I implore you to please-
Thank you. Your time is up, sir. Your time is up, sir. Speaker number 25, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, members of this council. My name is Soyla Santos Anaya, I live in 8557 Cleira Street for the last 20 years. I would like to share some very nice experience that my grandchildren have a few months ago with Mr. Trujillo. They came to the City Hall to meet Mr. Trujillo. They came from Jiu-Jitsu Academy. At this time, Mr. Trujillo was very nice, they inspired a lot of children, they was very happy with this experience, and my, my child especially, they was very happy, Mr. Trujillo touched him, because Mr. Trujillo give a lot of nice advice to the children at this time. But this week, my children came to me and said, "Oh Grandma, Grandma, I'm so sad," because my dad was talking to me about very sad news, something bad happened to a very nice guy. And, and they said, "Mr. Trujillo posted very bad, very bad comments about this guy." And that's touched me, touched my heart, broken my heart, because they have a very, very good experience with Mr. Trujillo a few months before. And Mr. Trujillo, I'm nobody, I'm nobody, I don't going to criticize your action-
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, ma'am, your time is up. Thank you, I'm sorry, your time is up. Speaker number, yes, I'm sorry, your time's up. Speaker number 26, your time is up, ma'am, your time is up. I'm sorry, ma'am, your time is up. I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm sorry, ma'am, this is your first warning. Speaker number 26, please come forward. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am, ma'am. Ma'am, you've been warned, you've been warned, ma'am. Guys, please, respected time. Speaker number 26, please come forward. No speaker number 26? Speaker number 27, please come, is there a speaker 26? No? Speaker number 27, please come forward.
Okay, boy, when you step in it and you don't want to be accountable, man, the deflect- Boy, when you step in it and you don't want to be accountable, man, the deflections come out of the woodwork, you know? There's more important things in Downey to worry about than this, right? You hear all of it. Those are deflections, especially when you don't want to support somebody and be accountable for what they've done. We got things to consider tonight: removal, resignation, recall, censure and resignation, and a vote. Now, it depends on how that vote's gonna go, because we don't know what the result's gonna be, whether it be three to one, four to zero, two to two. It is not a foregone conclusion, mayor, like it was implied earlier, that you and two other people were in cahoots and already had a foregone conclusion. We don't know how that vote's gonna go. So, because what happens is, is that you have a colleague, if you look three chairs to your left, mayor, at a forum of candidates, was asked, "What is his relationship with Mario Trujillo?" He says, "He's my mentor, and I am my own man." And you should look at that colleague of yours right now, three chairs to your left, and ask him, "Was Mario Trujillo your mentor then? And is Mario Trujillo your mentor now? And are you your own man?" And we're gonna see how this vote comes out, whether it's three to one or four to zero. Because if it's four to zero, Mario Trujillo should pin his resignation. He should be out. There's no doubt about it. But we'll see if District One is his own man tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 28, please come forward. Is there a speaker number 28? Speaker number 29, please come forward. Okay. Speaker number 30, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Diego Jimenez. I'm a lone resident of Downey. Thank God, I love the city. And I'm right here for Charlie's kids. You choose a very specific word to offend them. You choose the word wicked.
Please direct your comments towards me.
That implies that there is more wicked people out there. It implies more violence. There is no such thing as a free speech when you promote violence. That's what you did. Now these kids are gonna grow up without a father, who's gonna lead them in this world. You should know about the principle of authority. The residents of Downey, they give you authority, so you can use it. And you have been done the opposite. You have been a very bad example for all of us, promoting more violence. I feel sorry for you, dude.
Direct your comments towards me, please.
I feel sorry. You cannot be in a theater and proclaim fire. It's against the law. So promoting chaos is against the law. You should resign.
Before speaker number 31, sir. Guys, again, please direct your comments towards me. Speaker number 31, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Sosa, for prioritizing the citizens of Downey tonight by calling this meeting. I really consider this a privilege to be able to speak into this process and participate in it. Having listened closely to Councilmember Trujillo's statements he made, for the record, I listened even more carefully to what his attitude and posture is in his response to the special meeting being called. Because his response appears to be combative, a posture that demonstrates a little bit of hostility, a lack of taking responsibility for his post, this really causes me to doubt his honesty of his defense. So I'm moved by a sense of grief and urgency concerning Councilman Trujillo's responses and to the senseless and violent killing of Charlie Kirk. This is part of a disturbing trend of approval of violence against anyone disagreeing with liberal thought. Someone once said, "We mustn't let our failures define us, and we've got to let our failures teach us." This quote by President Barack Obama reminds us that while failures have consequences, they can also serve as turning points, if we're willing to learn from them and change course. Councilman Trujillo has failed us, right and left alike. The CEO of Turning Point USA's words are cherry picked often, such as by Speaker number four, by Speaker number 18 tonight, ignorantly taken out of larger conversation and context. But even if Mr. Kirk was hateful, which he was absolutely not, it does not justify his murder. We're allowed to disagree with one another peacefully. That brings me to Councilman Mario Trujillo's statement. According to his Instagram post, "If I grieve the death of Charlie Kirk," which I do, someone he labeled as a wicked man, "then I too am considered wicked." If that's how he views people who simply mourn this loss, how can he be trusted to serve a diverse city like Downey fairly and impartially? How can we believe that he will represent all residents, regardless of their personal beliefs?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker number 32, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I just heard about the controversy today for the first time, very late in the afternoon. And if my bike hadn't broken down, I wouldn't be reliant on somebody attending tonight for a ride. But having heard all, having, well, just heard, I wasn't going to comment, because I haven't read anything that was posted, so I don't comment on things I don't know, and I certainly don't comment on beliefs. So my hope is that for the people that follow me tonight, they are commenting based on what they know rather than what they believe. What I do know is that I have spoken face to face with everybody to your right and left, with the exception of Councilmember Ortiz, and on multiple occasions, I've gotten the measure of everybody. And all I can say is, when you hear an allegation like this, I hope everybody is certain of their facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 33, please come forward. Speaker number 34, please come forward. Speaker number 35. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I've been a community member and a resident for over 30 years, a proud one, too. My first encounter with Mario was the day that he came and he knocked on my door. He asked me for his vote, for my vote. And in that conversation, I asked him multiple questions as to why I should vote for him, what his beliefs were, what his thoughts were, and I never got a direct answer. But he always assured me that he was gonna represent us, the city of Downey, the residents, he was gonna do what was right for us. And I believed him, and I voted for him. Ever since I voted for him, I followed him throughout his political career. And man, what a regret that was. When people ask, "Do you have any regrets in life?", that was one of them. I have become an advocate for people that, when they say, "Who should I vote for?", it's never for that man, okay? That post that he put was disgusting. It was disrespectful to life and an embarrassment to me and the fellow residents of the city of Downey. I sit here and I watch him and his demeanor, and I can't believe it. This entire meeting is because of something that he said, something that he posted, and he could care less. I don't know if he's typing on a calculator, I don't know if he's typing on a cellphone, but he's busy doing something else. He does not represent me. It's an embarrassment, and again, it's truly disgusting. He's very cocky, he has a big head and a small brain. And I don't mean that funny. I don't mean that to be funny.
Thank you. Speaker number 36, please. Speaker number 37, please. Speaker number 38. Speaker number 39. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the council and fellow citizens. My name is Nestor Yepes, and I come here not only as a concerned resident, but also someone who seeks to honor God in both the Word and deed. I want to address the recent public posts made by Councilmember Mario Trujillo, the words, "No one mourns the wicked," in response to the tragic assassination of Charlie Kirk. They're deeply troubling. Regardless of political differences, the intentional celebration or dismissal of a person's murder is unacceptable for anyone, but especially for someone in public office who is entrusted with serving all people. Mario, you profess to be a Christian, which would mean that the Word of God, the Bible, is your ultimate authority. Scripture tells us in Proverbs 24:17, "Do not gloat when your enemy falls. When they stumble, do not let your heart rejoice. To take joy or satisfaction in death is not strength, it is wickedness." Ezekiel 33:11 reminds us of God's own heart. "I take no pleasure in the death of the wicked, but rather that they turn from their ways and live." When a public leader speaks the opposite of God's heart, it reflects poorly, not just on themselves, but on the office they hold, and it poisons the culture of our city. As citizens, we should all be deeply disturbed when anyone is murdered. Murder is evil, and to dismiss or even celebrate it dishonors human dignity. In Romans 12, it tells us, "Do not overcome evil, but do not be overcome by evil, but overcome evil with good." Councilmember, your words did not overcome evil, they multiplied it. They do not reflect justice, integrity, or compassion, but rather contempt and hardness of heart, and that is not acceptable for someone entrusted with your leadership. Yet I want to be clear, none of us is beyond redemption. The Book of First John promises, "If we confess our sins, he is faithful and just to forgive us and to cleanse us from all the righteousness." Councilmember, if you repent
Towards me, please.
In turn to God, his mercy is available, but as public servant, you are also accountable to the people you represent. For the sake of our community trust, I urge you to resign from your position immediately.
Before I call up, speaker number 40, please, again, direct your comments towards me. Good evening.
Mayor, how you doing?
Good.
I've reached out to you several times for a cup of coffee. Javier Garcia, I'm sure some of you guys all know Javier Garcia with Whittier Parents. I'm here speaking the voice for the people. Charlie Kirk, let's be real, guys, if you guys are true Americans, what was Charlie Kirk? He was a weapon used against my people. He was racist, discriminated, he has broke our country in half. Let's be real, true Americans, he was a weapon for Trump, attacking my people.
Let him speak.
As we're being detained like Ralph Gane in Animal, kids are being detained.
Comments towards me, please.
You know
Javier, please direct your comments towards me.
You guys want sympathy? He didn't get my kind sympathy. He was against towards my kind and people of color. Let's be real, true Americans stand up for freedom and the constitutional right. Our First Amendment is being taken at the moment, just like Whittier. They just placed an order to take our First Amendment right, and the Whittier of California, will you true Americans stand up against our constitutional right being taken from us, or you guys just gonna joke about it? True Americans will stand up for freedom and stand up for the constitutional right for all people, all human beings. Our land now is being taken from my people. This was our land. I don't see you guys standing up
Let him speak.
For the freedom of our people.
Let him speak.
You guys are true, you're not true Americans. Again, we all have our freedom of speech, yet you guys are here attacking
Javier
A council member.
Javier?
Yes.
Time, please. Guys, let the man speak. Okay, let's all show each other respect.
Come on, guys.
And Javier, please comment towards me. Please proceed.
We gotta step aside. It's we, the people. It doesn't matter left or right. Our country's being broken in half by evil and people being discriminated and targeted. Stand up for what's right. Right is right, and wrong is wrong, guys. You know, regardless, we have a freedom of speech. He could speak his mind, and no one should be against him speaking his mind. You know, I don't see you guys standing up against evilness and standing up of the terror that's going on to our country now at the moment. True Americans would stand up together and united.
Thank you.
And it's we, the people.
Thank you. Thank you. Speaker number 41. Sir? Javier, that's your first warning. Speaker number 41, please come forward.
Good afternoon. This, just wanted to remind everyone that this meeting isn't about Charlie Kirk, although I did meet Charlie Kirk, and he knew I had a nopal, and he was very nice to me, for the record. Second, as we can see, Councilmember Trujillo has failed as a Christian Catholic, according to him, so those values are out the door. However, he did get voted in with these values that are here on these walls. And does he think his post reflects those values for the city of Downey at all? They do not. He walked away because he is so condescending and capricious, and he doesn't want to hear it. Can we pause?
Pause, pause.
Let's pause.
What number speaker are you?
Forty-one? I believe, I don't know if I put it over here. I mean, I'm kind of almost done, but I did want him to hear me. I thought that was disrespectful.
Understood. We'll resume.
Okay.
Are we good? We good? Okay. Ma'am, let's go ahead and resume with your time.
Okay. Is he gonna hear this playback?
I'm sure he will.
Okay. Well, like I said, he failed as a Catholic, but he did get voted into this, and I believe as you all sit here, and this is where you work, you see all these values on this wall, which represent the city of Downey, or they're supposed to represent the city of Downey. He should have taken an oath to value all this. Now, was his comment and his post reflective of these values? I think not. And if he really cares for the city of Downey, and he wants to save the constituents' money, he would resign and save us all the headache of a recall. But we are ready to take it, we're ready to do it. We will do this, because we're not gonna let his attitude and his comments reflect all of us here.
So is one of you 42? Forty-one. Speaker number 41, please come forward. Good evening, Anell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I decided to come here just a couple hours ago, because it concerns me, and I feel for my own safety and that of my family, to think to bring them to something like this. But it's important to stand up, and it's important to share our voices. My daughter has a lot to say, and she will have a lot to say in the future here. So I don't have prepared comments. I do appreciate the eloquence of the folks that have been prepared to speak, so I'll do my best, and I ask for your grace. Is anyone else struck by the irony in how First Amendment is being invoked here by both Mr. Kirk and his followers, as well as by Councilman Trujillo? I think we all need to let that sit. I think we all need to let that resonate. What does that mean for us? I'm gonna take a personal moment here also to say, it should not be that I or any other person is fearful for their own safety, is fearful about what themselves or their children will be exposed to in coming into a forum like this. You all serve for a reason. You brought this and decided to do this, because it doesn't always come with gratitude. You brought this and decided to do this because it doesn't always come with gratitude. It comes with a lot of strife, it comes with opposition. But I think all of us here need to take a moment and step back. I have friends, I have lifelong colleagues, I have people that I've known for a very long time that do different things here, and I appreciate you all, and I appreciate the differences of opinion. But someone was murdered, not just a few steps from here, which has been said several times. That concerns me. The transient population in our city concerns me. What's being done or isn't being done on Firestone Boulevard between Woodruff and the freeway concerns me. I'd like to spend time, your time, your energy, your expertise...
Thank you, thank you. Speaker number forty-two, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Dear Mayor Sosa and everyone else, you respond to the residents of Downey. You are elected officials and therefore accountable to everyone in Downey. The comments made by Mr. Trujillo on September 10th on his social media account were betrayal to his constituents. He made a promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America to not entertain any threats to the country, neither foreign nor domestic. And Mr. Trujillo, he shared a violent message by saying, "No one mourns the wicked", meaning the murder of Charlie Kirk, a civilian who exercised his right to free speech on a college campus, a place where all thoughts, ideas, and methodologies are welcome. The irony, which, may I add, he added a song to his post. And if he's anything like millennials, you spend a long time picking a song to go with your post, and you also laugh because it goes perfect with your post. So I'm sure there was a lot of thought into what you posted, Mr. Trujillo. Your post dismissed the loss of human life. As an elected official, how could you protect the life of those with similar political and faith views as Charlie Kirk's? Your words betray the public trust. By dismissing the loss of life, you indirectly endorse future loss of life, especially for those who share conservative and faith. As councilmen, you can never be viewed as someone who is impartial, fair, or neutral for your community. And lastly, if you believe in your oath, you will stand down.
Speaker number forty-three, please come forward. Speaker number forty-four.
Good evening. Good afternoon, Mayor. My name is, there's a reason for the mask, give me a second, okay? My name is Jay Garcia, I go by @cyberjay on YouTube and X, and I'm actually here with some of my Republican groups. And I've been a longtime resident of Downey for about thirty-four years now, going on thirty-five. And let me tell you, and I'm living proof to tell you this right now, Downey is unrecognizable. But I'm not gonna leave because that would be a coward move. I'm all for free speech, but not hate speech. Attorney General Pam Bondi said today that there's free speech, but there's also hate speech, which is different. I am a Republican for many years, not just because of Trump, but way before that. Now, I'm not gonna sit here like, stand here, excuse me, like a hypocrite, but I wasn't the biggest Charlie Kirk fan, although I did think that his movement was positive for everybody, for both the far right and the left, so everyone could just come together, speech debate, kind of like what we're doing here. But unfortunately, his life was taken away. He didn't deserve to be killed, I don't condone violence, we're all for peace, just so you know. I'm thirty-eight years old, he was just a kid. He was a father of two, and you know, I see him as a kid, and you know, poor guy, you know, he just wanted to get on social media, get on a podcast, start his radio station. But I'm not perfect either. About four years ago, in 2021, when Joe Biden became the President of the United States, I did make some comments the day before about BLM that got me in a lot of trouble. I used to work for Kaiser Permanente, I was there for fifteen years, and let me tell you, they did the same to me. I was destroyed on social media, I was asked to resign from the company, and you know, why can't they do the same to him, is all I'm gonna say, because now we're on the other side, now we're seeing the other side.
Thank you. Speaker number forty-four, please come forward. Number forty-five. Speaker number forty-five, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Sosa, for bringing this meeting. After all the concern on social media that Mario Trujillo's message has put out, and I know he says, "Oh, it wasn't because of Charlie Kirk, that wasn't my intent", and he's trying to hide behind legal things because he never used his name, he never really said what it was about, but obviously, it was about Charlie Kirk. And I think it's just hypocritical that he's trying to stand behind the law and do whatever he wants. It's very hypocritical of him, and I don't think he should stand here with the rest of you and serve this city any longer. I think this is the start of his removal, whether you ask him to resign or not, but I think a recall should be in place. So please ask him to resign so we can save the city a lot of money. Thank you.
Speaker number forty-six, please come forward. Good evening.
Charlie was a messenger of God. While we are in mourning and shocked of the brutal murder, Mario is making insensitive jokes. He is disingenuous and does not represent the residents of Downey. Therefore, we have zero confidence in him, in his leadership. His presence in office is no longer desired, and we demand his resignation. Thank you.
Speaker number forty-seven, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Donna. I've been a resident of Downey for twenty-seven years. I support the city council to uphold the respect of professionalism and professional conduct in our city and as our representatives of our city and our nation. Ironically, today is Constitution Day, and I think that the people have spoken. The Constitution was written for the government to represent the people. I mourn for our country, I mourn for our city. We have fallen to this state of dissension. I call for you, Mr. Mayor, to lead our city government and our city back to its greatness. Return us to civility and respect of discourse and behavior. Thank you, and thank you to our council for the bravery to stand for being a city of respect and order. I pray for you, I've expressed that to various members of the council over the years. It is our duty as citizens to pray for our government, including our local government, and I pray for God's wisdom, and I pray for healing in our city and in our country. This is a great city, and I hate to see our city represented the way it is.
Thank you. Speaker number forty-eight, please come forward. And speaker number forty-nine. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Sosa, city council members, and city staff. I don't believe it is a coincidence that we are gathered here today for this special meeting on Constitution Day. Article 6 of the United States Constitution requires that every elected official in the United States takes an oath to uphold the U.S. Constitution while serving in their elected office. Five pillars of liberty are embedded within the preamble of the U.S. Constitution, which are as follows: to establish justice, to ensure domestic tranquility, to provide for the common defense, to promote the general welfare, and to secure the blessings of liberty. The continuous disgraceful actions of city council member Mario Trujillo during his time on this city council have stood against all five of these pillars of liberty, and thus, Mr. Trujillo has not held true to his oath to the U.S. Constitution. Mr. Trujillo's actions include disrespect and dishonor toward members of his constituency, many times occurring in this very chamber, deceptive tactics against his own constituency to further his own political agenda, instead of the agenda that is in the best interest of all Downey residents, and as we have most recently witnessed, a deep lack of character and moral integrity through his violent supporting and violence inciting behavior toward every Downey resident who loves and supports Charlie Kirk and the values he represents, and who see him as their dear brother. Mr. Mayor, therefore, on behalf of my family and I and many Downey constituents, and in honor of our U.S. Constitution on this Constitution Day, I am asking the city council to hold Mr. Trujillo accountable for his unacceptable behavior and actions. There should be a standard of moral goodness, or at least moral decency, for elected officials. Mr. Trujillo's apparent behavior lies far below these standards. A person who demeans many members of his constituency and whose behavior may be a potential threat of violence against many of his constituents is unfit to be a public servant who has taken an oath to serve his constituency according to their best interest. The representatives of the great city of Downey should not be engaged in reprehensible behavior, and this is certainly not the kind of representation that Downey residents deserve. Mayor, Lord Jesus, bless you all in our great city of Downey, and may we continue to uphold our city to the standards of his goodness, his righteousness, his truth, and his justice.
Speaker number fifty, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Wasn't planning to speak, but really short. Just wanted to express my disgust that our Downey public servant made such an evil comment to the public. Where is his compassion, his understanding of human life? Charlie Kirk inspired our youth with a sense of hope and to be fearless towards defending their values. Mr. Trujillo has discouraged civic debate to grow among our young leaders by posting such an evil post. There is no turning back on what he posted, but Mr. Trujillo needs to walk with humility and act like a true leader. A true leader serves and cares for others. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number fifty-two, please come forward. We now have a total of fifty-four speakers. Is there a speaker number fifty-two? Speaker number fifty-three. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Zulie Evelyn Vaquirano Flores. I go to school here in Downey, I go to Stafford Middle School. And I'm thirteen years old, I'm in eighth grade, and I am a conservative Christian. And all I can say is whatever, is what Mr. Trujillo said was very inappropriate. I get it, you don't have to mourn the death of a person you may not agree with their beliefs or whatever they say. But it's not right to go out and just say to, and just say that in general, because that is so disrespectful. He was, Charlie Kirk was a husband, he was a father, and he was a son. That was a man, and he got his life taken out there for free speech out in the university, which is not okay, that is not okay at all. I'm very disappointed and disgusted with what Mr. Trujillo said. That is not, he should not be representing Downey. Sorry for my choice of words. But yes, I'm very disappointed and appalled, and all I can, yes, all I can say is that's wicked. And yes, I believe free speech, but there's no such, but hate speech should not be put out there. That is very wrong. And all I can say is it's so dumb that we should be having this out here because somebody said, because somebody made this comment. If you have nothing nice to say, keep it to yourself.
Let her speak.
There was somebody just murdered, and we could be talking about that, but no. He, Mr. Trujillo, had to make that dumb comment, and now we're here wasting our time. Very disappointing, very disgusted. I'm so pissed off.
Thank you, thank you. Speaker number fifty-four, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for the time, council members. Just for the record, I do want to note that when there was a special session to, held to discuss the unlawful kidnapping of our neighbors by unidentified masked men, we had less people than this, and the public comment was shortened to a minute and thirty seconds. So I think it's important to notice those differences. So let me start by saying that no one should be killed, no one should be shot, not immigrants picked up by masked men and taken to undisclosed locations, not innocent people in Gaza, not black and brown people by police, and not in front of our city library where you're just trying to charge your vehicle. I'm at least encouraged by the fact that we appear to agree on that. So let's take some quotes by Mr. Kirk, and these are his own words, and I do hear the concerns about context, so I made extensive efforts to make sure that these were correct. This is my other problem with the death penalty. It takes too long, too many appeals. It should be public, it should be quick, and it should be televised. And by the way, you could have like a "Brought to you by Coca-Cola". I'm not kidding, by the way. I would totally tune in to see someone get their head chopped off. You know what? I want to watch that execution, that would make my day better. I want to see him on the public block, and I want to see him be executed. What's the age, what's the age that people should see public executions? It's funny, I used to say, if you, as a gay person, would go to Gaza, they would throw you off a tall building, right? Now, they don't have tall buildings left. Ha ha ha, is that too soon? Then maybe you shouldn't kill Jews, you stupid Muslims. Direct quotes. Someone mentioned love and caring earlier, and I don't think that sounds like love and caring. I heard today that words matter, that words can be violent or inspire violence, and maybe we agree on that, and that's good. I guess where I struggle is understanding why no one mourns the wicked is so incredibly devastating, but these words that I just read haven't been devastating. If you are part of any groups that Mr. Kirk bullied and put a target on, are you expected to mourn him? I don't know. So I invite us to embrace complexity. A family has been left without a father and a partner due to gun violence, and that is tragic. It is also tragic that these words were used to violence as well.
All right. I think that's the end of our speakers, right? Is there a motion and a second to close public comment?
Second.
Sort of by the mayor. Now, we will now move on to the one item of business on the special meeting agenda tonight. Number one, consideration of censure of council member Mario Trujillo, that the city council consider the censure of council member Mario Trujillo based on a video posting made on his Instagram account concerning the shooting death of Charlie Kirk on September 10th, 2025, at Utah Valley University. I will start off by saying thank you all for being here and participating in this public discourse. This is democracy, and it's nice to see everyone engage, no matter how you feel about this situation or this matter, this subject matter. I do want to reference that I called for a special meeting today and not to carry on over to our next council meeting, which is Tuesday, September 23rd, so that we can just focus on this item, and it doesn't disrupt our way of doing business or being able to handle the business of the city in a normal city council meeting coming up on the 23rd. Honestly, I wish we could handle this discussion internally. We could squash this amongst ourselves, but we cannot do that. Otherwise, we'd be in violation of the Brown Act. Otherwise, we'd be in violation of the Brown Act. That's why this meeting has been made open to the public. A censure is a tool that is available to us as a legislative body. This tool gives us a way to police each other and hold each other accountable as elected officials, serving in the interest of our community. And again, we're here to discuss a consideration of a censure of Councilmember Mario Trujillo, and along with that, well, because of the video posting made on his Instagram account, and along with that, subsequent actions and exchanges with concerned members of our And also how this violates our code of conduct. And I will read portions of our code of conduct that I believe this violates. Code of Ethics and Conduct adopted April 27, 2021. The area that I feel these actions violate are under the section Respect for Fellow Elected Officials, Staff, and the Public. One point, I treat my fellow officials, staff, and the public with patience, courtesy, and civility, even when we disagree on what is best for the community. Second point, I work towards consensus building and gain value from diverse opinions. Third point, I conduct myself in a courteous and respectful manner at all times during the performance of my official city duties. With that said, I will have some additional comments later on after additional discourse and deliberation by this body, but at this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Councilmember Mario Trujillo, so he can share a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be submitting my pre-printed, you've all seen me, I've been here except for when I went to the bathroom, my prepared statements. We should have clarified that my statement earlier was a procedural, a statement made for procedural purposes. Thank you for the opportunity that's been afforded to me under the auspices of due process to allow me to defend myself against these accusations. Let me start by saying, before I begin my comments, that I do want to acknowledge and pay respects to the memory of Reynaldo LeFonce. I did not know him, but today a Downey resident, Ms. Susan Brown, sent us all a heartfelt email sharing her personal experiences about Mr. LeFonce. This is indeed a tragedy. As many of you may know, we had a homicide just feet from here. 68-year-old resident, bright daylight, charging his car, and a 23-year-old individual, possibly with mental health issues, stabbed him with the screwdriver, and he's deceased. This is a tragedy, it's a loss for our city. And most relevance of this council, I think it's a call for an action for us to improve the security and safety around the Downey Civic Center and the city in general. We must continue to remain united and prioritize public safety in Downey regardless of our political differences. I am proud to say and honored to say that I think we've done that. We're very pro-law enforcement city. We just supported a measure to tax ourselves to get more men and women into our police force to protect us. We must continue to prioritize public safety. But today we're using city resources, taxpayer money, and valuable staff time to discuss my story on my personal social media page. We should be having a special meeting to discuss public safety, but the mayor has called this meeting to discuss my post, so let's go ahead and do that. First and foremost, I want to apologize to my husband and my family. If I could take this back, I absolutely would. I effed up. My personal page I turned to for political discourse, it's kind of what it's known for, but I effed up. A minimum, I was insensitive, and I go back to it was probably too soon. We are here because of this story. On September 10th, it included five words, the name of the opening song from actually my favorite musical, Wicked. It's now a movie, and it's the opening song. No one mourns the wicked. Those five words were not meant to be a personal attack, a threat, or an incitement to violence. Criticism is not political violence. I do not condone violence of any kind. Mr. Kirk did not deserve to be killed, and I hope the shooter is prosecuted to the full extent of the law. No one deserves to be hurt in any way because of their political beliefs. That's just simply not the American way. I want to be clear what I did not do. I did not target or insult anyone by individual name. I did not share any video as been put forth in this agenda. In particular, I want to be clear that while there is that video of the homicide, I've never shared it. I find that video to be distasteful, and I understand that my story is seen by many of you as being distasteful. I am accepting accountability for that. I did it. I did not celebrate anyone's death, but I simply stated my choice not to mourn him.
No albers from the crowd, please. Sorry about that.
I did not celebrate anyone's death, but I simply stated my choice not to mourn him, and I stand by that. I will not mourn the death of someone who said awful things such as about Martin Luther King, someone who said things about immigrants being shot at the border, someone who said the gays are destructive. I could go on with the quotes, but I'm not intending to do that, and I won't because there's many of you that value Mr. Kirk. Mr. Kirk was loved, and whether you agree with him politically or not, this just simply should not have happened. And you being today and speaking up, I have been listening. I've been here, I could have opted not to be here. He, Mr. Kirk held dearly the freedom of expression, the right of speech, the values and rights that we swore to uphold when we took the oath as council people for this city. We talked about the Constitution, you swear on the Constitution. I did not use city resources or claim to be speaking on behalf of the city or this council. I shared my personal opinions the same way any other resident of the city is free to do in their personal time. You may disagree with my words, but disagreement does not erase my constitutional rights. I have a right to freedom of speech, but I understand that my right to freedom of speech does not come without consequences. It's been a difficult week for my family. There's been death threats on my family, such as the many death threats that Mr. Kirk felt.
No albers in the crowd, please.
We've made the appropriate reports. My kids have been contacted. It's been a horrible week, and that's why I want to apologize in particular to my husband. I should have known better. Somebody said it, I think the 13-year-old, like, if you don't have nothing nice to say, don't say nice, nothing nice at all. It's right. I've learned my lesson, especially because I'm hearing it. It probably wasn't necessary, it wasn't sensitive, and I should be held accountable for that. I did not, you may disagree my words, but disagreement does not erase my constitutional rights. My story was a commentary about behavior and values. In particular, if you know anything about me, I am a sociology, Chicano Studies major from UC Berkeley. My emphasis was race relations. I'm an openly gay man, so in political discourse, I am very much concerned about racism, homophobia, misogyny. My story was about my opinion of what is wrong or dangerous in leadership. The story was not a celebration of death nor a call for retribution. My story was political discourse, which I'm known for on my personal Instagram account. Most of us, I believe, have two accounts. If you go to my city account, it's for messaging for the city, it's to let the residents know about announcements, whatnot. It's my official, if you will, Instagram account. It's important to know that I believe the five of us have used those accounts for various purposes, and our personal posts have come into the discussion of the public. In particular, I do want to single out, it was brought to my attention of Councilwoman from Meta's celebratory party on election night. It was going wild on social media. People were calling on me to respond, to share. I didn't. The mayor has argued that my story on personal Instagram, or the mayor contends that my story on my personal Instagram account violated the city's code of ethics, especially the section about showing respect to fellow officials, staff, and the public. I want to apologize to the staff, and I want to apologize to the city of Downey, to the staff. I'm sorry that we put you in this predicament. We turn to our city attorney frequently, and at times I feel like, well, who's he looking out for? Is he looking out for my interests? So I did request conflict counsel. But that's nothing to say that I don't trust and have confidence in our city attorney, in our city manager, and in our staff. We have a fantastic staff. The code of ethics is important. It encourages us to work with professionalism and mutual respect, but it cannot and does not override the U.S. Constitution. The Supreme Court recently looked at this very question in Lindke versus Freed, 2024. The court said it was a public official's social media's post, and they're only official if you're only using government power. If someone's posting from a personal account, that speech is private and protected. Lindke is L-I-N-D-K-E versus Freed. In another case, O'Connor, Radcliffe versus Garnier, 2024, the court said the same thing again. When elected officials post on their personal pages, that's private speech, and the government cannot punish them for it. So while I appreciate the code of ethics and support it, the adoption, respect does not mean silence. Disagreement is not disrespect, and most importantly, criticism is not political violence. If this council was to censure me for expressing my personal political views on my own personal social media, it would not be enforcing ethics. It would be engaging in unconstitutional censorship. Furthermore, it will establish a precedent for future councils and council members to begin to censure each other whenever they disagree with their colleagues or may find something to be insensitive and uncalled for, which is what my story was. If the council goes forward with the censure, it risks violating my constitutional rights, going against recent Supreme Court rulings, and exposing the city to legal challenges. More importantly, it risks eroding the trust of the public who expect us as their elected officials to stand up for the tenets of the Constitution, one of them being free expression. I urge you not to take this step. Let's show true leadership by welcoming differences of opinion instead of punishing them. Let's prove that Downey values not only professionalism and respect, but also liberty and the freedoms that many of our veterans like Mr. Squire fought for. Those are the values that make our country strong. Mr. Mayor, you cite the city's reputation in your papers asking for this meeting. This is the first special meeting you've called, I believe, since we've been under your tenure. Apparently, you're concerned that this story on my personal Instagram account will hurt the reputation of the city. Let's talk about the reputation of the city that I call home, that I love dearly, and I will probably die here. I moved here 35 years ago. I was an impressionable kid. I came to be a teacher, and I landed in Downey, California, and I fell in love right away. I was raised in very liberal San Francisco. I went to Berkeley. Freedom of speech was a big thing in Berkeley. We practiced freedom of speech. I was arrested twice for civil disobedience, protesting against certain things. I was, I guess, what people call an activist. I was young. But let's talk about the city that I call home. We're a step-up community with beautiful neighborhoods, a good school district, and most importantly, we prioritize public safety. But there are other things that are said about our city, my beautiful city, that have constantly concerned me. Some people say that our city was known for being racist. Well, let me tell you, in the 35 years that I've been here, I've never personally encountered any form of animosity based on my race. I came out later in life. I've never encountered any personal animosity, except in these chambers, when it comes to my sexual identity. It's been a beautiful city. It's been a welcoming city. I got married here, I raised my kids here, and like I said, I will probably die here. When the opportunity came up for me to run, I was retiring from the DA's office after 30 years of public service as an elementary school teacher and a prosecutor, and I said, sure, let me volunteer for this position. This position is not a paid position. We get a stipend, $950, which I'm very grateful for. Most of it goes to my social media team for whatever they do. We're not in it for the money, and it is a lot of work. Our city is the shining star in the southeast, and I think we work hard to make it even better. If we start getting into what is the reputation of the city, we must talk about, if you're concerned about the reputation, then let's talk about the reputation and where was your concern for the reputation of the city when you, Mr. Mayor, made a motion, and it was adopted by you, Councilwoman from Meta and Pemberton regarding the pride flag. There I was, the first openly gay mayor. I sent out invitations for a pride-raising flag ceremony, and my own colleagues put an agenda item to prevent me from doing that. I thought we had made progress, but you did what you thought the people had elected you to do. And we were caught in a media storm, where I was trusted and found myself having to defend the reputation of our city as being homophobic, as being anti-LGBT, and I kept having to defend that no, the city is a loving, accepting city. And do not let this one action by this council deter you from living freely and honestly in the city of Downey. Then, there was the ICE race. You did not call for a special meeting when our communities were being torn apart, when families were being terrorized. And there I went again, having to defend our city as not being anti-immigrant. We're very much a city of immigrants. We're 75% Latino by all statistics. But yet, the lack of this council, immediate action as other cities were calling special meetings, didn't go unnoticed, and again, the reputation of our city hung in the balance. There I went, continuing to work with us, with you, with my colleagues, to correct the misperceptions that we were working with ICE, that we were harboring ICE at the embassy suites, that we were part of the terrorism that was going on, and that was not the case. We understood the limitations we had under the federal government, and we moved forward. What today really is about is our political differences and not about our code of ethics. This is about our differences in political ideology, which I thought we were doing a good job of protecting our political ideology and differences from coming into the sanctity of the walls of this chamber. It's well-known that the five of us are not politically aligned, but we never let those differences come into the sanctity of these chambers. We were proud to say we were a nonpartisan, unified council that voted unanimously, consistently to this day, about 95% of the time, on the matters that affect our city most: public safety, infrastructure, services. Look, it's well-known that you, Mayor, and Councilwoman from Meta are Trump supporters. That's your right. I was proud of the fact that Downey was being represented in DC. I saw the pictures of you in the inauguration. I was happy for you, because that's America, that's politics, and there you were. Then there was the video of election night of Councilwoman from Meta. I never said anything about those things. I'll ask you, how do you think the residents in fear of ICE feel when they see one of our own celebrating the election of the man who they our own celebrating the election of the man who they blame for bringing fear and havoc into our community? And still, I've always maintained respect and civility with everyone, because we have a job to do.
No outbursts. Let him speak, please. No outbursts.
Thank you. And we know it's best to keep our national political differences outside this chamber. I have repeatedly told people, in particular, Deacon Mario Guerra, that even though we disagree politically, I have never doubted your love, all of you, for our city. I've often said that while I'm gone, my city's in good hands, because I know that you love this city, and I truly believe that you vote with the city's best interests in mind when you vote in this chamber. Now, with that said, I do want to apologize in particular, I'm probably going to get backlash for this, but I do admit that I have friends, close friends, that support Mr. Trump. We have agreed to never discuss politics, religion, or sexuality. I'll tell you why I took my story down. One of those friends called me. We had this agreement to not talk about politics, but he called me, I'm going to keep him anonymous, and he said, Mario, I think you crossed the line. He shared his feelings, and he made me realize that I was being insensitive, and for that, I apologize. And I thank my friend for calling me, for having the courage to call me. Yes, I'm a registered Democrat, and I'm a big supporter of law enforcement, and I am a proud capitalist, okay? I love this country and will probably die here, even though I am a dual citizen and we have property, my mother's land in Mexico, but this is the country that saw me born, and it's given me so many opportunities. I like to say that my mom raised a patriot, but my mom also taught me to meet level of disrespect exactly when I'm confronted with it. She taught me to speak up if I felt there was injustice being had, and she taught me to fight back. Now, I often think about what the five of us have in common, and that's the love for the city, but I am different from the four of you. I do talk back, just like Mr. Trump. I do use social media, and as I found out this week, social media is so powerful that you can hurt somebody's feelings. If you know me, even if you think I'm an Adam Henry, that's a nice way of saying asshole, I'm not that guy that would celebrate someone's death. So when I found that I had hurt my friend's feelings, I took down the post, because I'm not that guy. Even though intentionally, that was not my goal, to hurt somebody's feelings, it remained that I had caused that emotion in someone. I chose to take it down because it's not me. I do not make it a practice to disrespect people, and I do appreciate the need for sensitivity. It was insensitive to some, and I made a disagreement wholeheartedly with your politics, many of you here, but I also recognize that in humanity, some of us will choose to grieve, and I need to be respectful of that. But for you to censor me because I hurt someone's feelings, that's not appropriate. I hope you realize that perhaps you have also hurt people's feelings, my colleagues, but I do not think you intentionally chose to do that. You made certain decisions and choices according to your values. Your actions against the pride flag and your lack of actions, if you will, in denouncing the ICE raids, you're perfectly entitled to. And moving forward, when I saw you in public, we shook hands, we took pictures, we respected each other, and we were civil. This council has never been dramatic, if you will, in public, as I have seen in other cities. We behave accordingly to show that unified front for our city. Just this Sunday, we did that at a historic, first-time-ever celebration of Mexican independence at our theater. We had council generals, guests, and so it's always important to represent our city adequately. And I apologize to any of my constituents if you think that I didn't do that because of this post. But I do want to remind you all that, under this council, we have seen the largest investment in infrastructure that the city has ever seen. We have fixed more miles of streets than any councils have ever repaired, more miles of sidewalks and alleys, and we've added more, we've added more officers than any other council has ever previously done. So for those of you that say you've lost your confidence in me, that's not fair. You take one story, and you want me to resign, and you want to recall me, look...
Let him speak. Let him speak. Let him speak.
So if you choose to move forward with censure resolution today, I believe you're setting a bad precedent for future councils, and you're causing further divide, as was seen with this meeting. You should have known that there was going to be, as you're saying, both sides of the aisle. By calling this meeting, you're causing the further divide. I am afraid, I am afraid that we may be giving in to the call from our political bases, if you will, for some action. Censor is not the appropriate action. At the end of the day, our residents want public safety. That's number one, and we have delivered. Mr. Mayor, your moving papers talk about respect and civility. Well, I submit to you, when it comes to respect and civility from the five of us, I've shown nothing but respect and civility to all of you. Have I spoken back to residents? Absolutely, and I will continue to speak back to residents, because if you think that I'm going to allow you to call me names when you don't even know me and you don't even pay me, you have me confused. I'm simply not that person.
Let him speak. Let him speak.
So...
Let him speak.
So, so just keep in mind that we should not feed into the forces trying to instigate and divide us as a city. I encourage you all to take pause and deliberate from a place, as I believe you've always done, and vote in what's in the best interest of the city. Thank you. And I will be submitting my four-page, prepared remarks to...
Order. Order. Guys, we still have some more deliberation to go. Thank you, Councilmember Trujillo. Let me just state a few comments before I turn it over to my colleagues. Councilmember Trujillo, to insinuate that we're sharing our thoughts, because those are the thoughts of our basis, is an insult to all of us. For the record, let me remind you that this very council right here appointed you as the first openly gay mayor, okay? Hold on. We did have a special meeting regarding the ICE raids, okay? Also, for the record, and I'd like you to strike it from your comments, but I did not attend the inauguration. I was in D.C. for the U.S. Conference of Mayors, which happened the previous three days, but I did not attend the inauguration of Trump.
My apologies, Mr. Mayor. I thought you had.
Thank you. Also, there is a difference between censure and censor, and I will remind everybody in the audience that this is a nonpartisan legislative body. And with that said, before I continue with my comments, I will now open this up, this item for council deliberation. Colleagues, any comments, questions, concerns?
Yes, Mayor Sosa. So I've thought for several hours, several days, and I've put together something that is written, it's scripted, but I think will address a lot of the issues that you are here to speak with and of. So first, you can hear me. First, I heard of the assassination from Charlie Kirk from friends. I did not know who Charlie Kirk was. Then received texts from friends of Councilman Trujillo's post stating, "No one mourns the wicked." It was hard for me to believe that this strange and cryptic post was an insensitive post related to the assassination of Mr. Kirk. I always tried to look for the positive of things or the positive of people. I actually thought it was related to the play, but I realized it was against Mr. Kirk, because I looked at subsequent posts with it. It showed his dislike of the individual. Secondly, free speeches for all, yes. Hateful or threatening speech, no. There are standards and expectations for elected officers, as there are with people of high authority, such as religious positions, educators, doctors, et cetera. They have a higher moral code of conduct, and the same standard is for elected officials. I've seen posts that said, "Show us that council members have rules. They can say what they want. It's their First Amendment right." Well, not quite when you're an elected official representing a city or the people. Three, the city has a resolution that was adopted in 2021. Downey City Council, along with the commissioners and committee members, have a code of conduct that we signed that has been mentioned. This is Resolution 21-8015, and I'll quote from this. "The purpose of a code of ethics and conduct is to assure that all elected of the Downey City Council, while exercising their office, conduct themselves in a manner that will instill public confidence and trust in the fair operation and integrity of the city." And it goes on. So let me restate some key words: public confidence, trust, and integrity. So let me read some examples from the code of ethics. Mayor Sosa has read some of this. The certification, this was adopted in a code, "As an elected official of the city council of the city of Downey, California, I herein certify that I have received a copy of the code of ethics and conduct of the city of Downey. I have been offered assistance in understanding this code, and I am aware of the provisions of the code and its application to my responsibility consistent with the code. I pledge the following in the context of my duties." There are a number of items. Mayor Sosa had addressed one. "Under integrity and honesty, I do not notably use any false or inaccurate information to support my position or views. Under fairness, I treat all persons' claims and transactions in a fair and equitable manner. Under respect for fellow elected officials, I treat my fellow officials, staff, and the public with patience, courtesy, and civility, even when we disagree on what is best for the community. I also highlighted I conduct myself in a courteous and respectful manner at all times during the performance of my official city duties. Hundreds of residents have called the city hall to express their displeasure in the posting, which we are all aware of. Words such as insensitive, inhumane, lack of leadership, political discourse, poor conduct, lack of respect, these are all words from the emails we received. Lack of integrity for our city, lacks confidence of an elected official to represent our city properly, lacks moral integrity, also not becoming of an elected official or representative of Downey. Once we are elected officials, we are to be held to a higher standard with our words and our actions. What we say is a reflection of our position that we hold. Also, how we respond and speak to our residents is also to be held with respect to them, to you. There have been several emails that were sent to Councilman Trujillo and copied all of us, stating their displeasure and shock on his posting and his words. Councilman Trujillo replied to some, and they were berated and attacked for their opinion. But most shocking are a couple. Councilman Trujillo was aggressive and used offensive words and even a cuss word, the F-word spelled out, was spelled out, that Charlie Kirk at the end of the reply. That resident was appalled. That violates the code of ethics under respect to the public. These comments and responses by Councilman Trujillo were shocking and not civil or courteous as the line of the code of ethics stated. I conduct myself, quote, "in a courteous and respectful manner at all times during the performance of my official city duties." This is a violation of that section. Also, apologies to the residents, I say apologies to the residents that receive degrading replies. We elected officials, and all elected officials need to be sensitive, compassionate, and respectful. Even when the comments may be tough or we disagree, we must always remain professional and respectful. So what is censure? The primary consequence of a censure is a formal reprimand. There are no financial penalties or removal from office. It serves to formally express strong disapproval of the member's misconduct and/or for their actions. The social media post shows, and the emails show, that Councilman Trujillo has violated a number of items in the code of conduct and ethics. The residents have voiced their concerns, and we need to act in the best interest of the community on acting on this. This is what we were elected to do: represent our residents by responding to their concerns. As one resident stated, "Such behavior undermines the trust and respect that the people of Downey deserve from their elected officials. Councilmember Trujillo's actions reflect a disturbing insensitivity that has no place in public service. This is not about Charlie Kirk's beliefs and whether he was right or wrong. This is not the issue at hand. Everyone can choose and make their decisions. Today, we are making a stance on what is right and wrong for an elected official to be making insensitive public comments about the assassination of someone. The murder of a human being should never be mocked on social media or any other place, period." That ends my comments.
Thank you, Mayor Prell of Tempe, Pemberton. Councilmember from Meta?
Thank you, Mayor. As was said, the meeting tonight is not about taking a stance regarding Charlie Kirk and the horrific murder. The meeting tonight is about addressing a conduct that is unbecoming of an elected official. The horrific murder that occurred a week ago today is an assault on all of us, on our freedoms to express our views and opinions. His assassination is a blatant attack on the very fabric of this country, and on people's right to their opinions and being able to express them freely without fear of harassment, intimidation, violence, or death. Anyone that celebrates or excuses taking someone's life because they didn't agree with them is morally bankrupt. Political violence has reached a breaking point, and as elected leaders and representatives, it is our duty to stand against violence, especially, especially when we disagree with what is being said. As Councilmember Trujillo mentioned three times during his statements about the election video that surfaced at my house some months ago, that was not posted by me or a family member, that is, as has been said, my political views surfaced. And as an American-loving individual who celebrates election night every time we have an election, his conduct of sharing and inciting division caused my family and I to be harassed online in just his statements a few minutes ago, equating violence and ICE to our political views. Harassing, intimidating, and instigating violence against political opponents is un-American. And unfortunately, it is Councilmember Trujillo's pattern of behavior that brings us to this meeting. He has had a pattern of disrespecting and harassing and bullying, not just Downey citizens, but colleagues like myself, who... not just Downey citizens, but colleagues like myself who he disagrees with. At a recent national convention where I preside as president with 900 elected officials from across the country, Mr. Trujillo engaged in harassing behavior. He violated the bullet point demonstrating concern for the proper use of agency assets such as time, property, equipment, or funds. He, wearing his city jacket, passed cards and pins, singling me out for a decision that we as a council took last year regarding a neutral flag policy. That created, and this was the night before the national convention was set to open, that created such intimidation and harassment I feared for my physical safety. If, that was a boiling point. And while he says we don't usually bring these issues to light, because these matters, we deal with them behind closed doors. The organization was forced to hire armed security to be with me during the time of the conference, and this happened in July. This, we can sit here and we can talk about the freedom of speech. But what we're talking about here goes above, more than that. My family and I, he spoke recently about asking forgiveness to his husband, about being targeted, about receiving death threats. My family and I have been fearing for our safety since 2021. When he emailed me and then-city manager and the council bullying me and asking for a city council mayoral reorganization when I was mayor in 2021, because I had brought an agenda for a vote of no confidence regarding George Gascon. I paused that because at the time, he was still working for the DA George Gascon, and I gave him the courtesy to say, "We will pause this. Twenty other cities have already given their vote of no confidence." I have those emails. But this is a pattern. And by the way, this this resolution regarding Code of Conduct came about and was adopted and approved as a council the 27th day of April 2029, when I was mayor, the first go-around. And I had to bring this to bear because of Mr. Trujillo's conduct at the time. "I treat my fellow officials, staff, and the public with patience, courtesy, and civility, even when we disagree." I think he's violated that time and time again. Not only has he put me and my family in tremendous physical and emotional distress over a number of years. My children are followed. My children have been targeted on social media. But here we are, discussing whether his post is about freedom of speech. Freedom of speech, as elected officials, we take an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States against enemies foreign and domestic. I don't have the luxury to take my elected hat off when I step off this dais. Whether I'm wearing my city jacket or not, as long as I am an elected representative of the City of Downey, California, I shall adhere to the oath that I took. And similarly, I cannot, I may disagree, and I may have disagreed vehemently with some of my residents. Some may have been, and you've seen it because we've had, we had some of those meetings televised back then. We had very difficult individuals that were vile and had comments that were beyond reprehensible. And as a public servant, we stand here to represent everyone. Looking at this Code of Conduct and Ethics, Mr. Trujillo has violated six of them, at least. I ask the public that this meeting and those that are watching, that this is a turning point for our communities to come together. I really don't care who is left or right or black or white. I am called out all the time because people think, because I'm a conservative, I am, I am no longer Hispanic, I am no longer Mexican. You know, it's nonsense. We are American-loving individuals. and, and Mr. Trujillo, I, I really don't care, sir, what you decide to do behind closed doors in the bedroom. I see you as an attorney. I see you as a competent man. Your sexual orientation has no basis for anything. It doesn't merit you one way or the other. I see you as a man that achieved a great deal. I don't see people based on the color of their skin or their sexual orientation. And that is what Charlie Kirk was preaching. I don't see you as a different person. When I, when I come to the dais, I don't say, "Hi, I'm Claudia Fremetta, and I'm a heterosexual." Your sexual orientation has no place and no business, period. Thank you.
I do have some additional comments, but colleagues, any additional comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
I want to clearly restate what I've always believed. Violence is never the answer. And when I saw the shooting of Charlie Kirk, it brought me a lot of images, and frankly, it scared me because we're put in this position to make decisions, vote on decisions that sometimes people are not going to like. And even today, however you vote, half of them will like you, and another half will like you. I think Mayor, when he first called me when I won, and he told me, he's like, "Olas, you're not going to make everybody happy." And here we are. Regarding my colleague's post of recent events, Mario, respectfully in front of Downey, I did not like how you chose to address it. And you're my friend. But one thing I will let everybody know, he is not me, just as I am not any of you. We all express our values differently, and we all respond differently to crises affecting our lives, such as the immigration activity that happened here in our community. That diversity of thought and expression is protected by the First Amendment, which is embedded in the Constitution that I swore to uphold. Would I have committed or would I commented the way that my colleague did? No, I would not. And I did not. If you look back at my post, I sympathized, I was hurt, and I prayed for our nation. Do I believe the situation could have been handled more thoughtfully? Yes. But calling a special meeting over a post, especially when our community is facing other urgent issues, like the stabbing of a resident here or the stealing of an ambulance that just occurred within days, same day, I feel this meeting is misplaced. I was elected to work on homelessness, attract businesses, and improve public safety. And I have some residents here, and I just want to say thank you for being here. I'm here because I thought I'd be voting on how to make our streets cleaner and repave our streets and adding more streetlights that we just voted on the other day. And hopefully, we get cat's paws. But I did not come here to sit in judgment of my colleague's words. These are the issue our residents expects us to address, and I'll be in favor to have any special meetings for those items that I mentioned. These, this moment should not divide us further. Let the residents judge his post. We should not be in the business of attacking one another. I came into council, and I promised my colleagues that I will always support and defend and help each other. And I always message my colleagues and say, "We're the A Team of Downey." Regardless of how we voted or how we stand, I will always shake my colleague's hand and say, "We're here for Downey." And I will still do that today. This vote, or what happens today, should serve as a reminder of how urgently we need to lower the temperature and seek understanding amongst each other. I do not believe this vote reflects unity amongst our colleagues, nor do I, does it align with the work our community elected us to do. And I hope after today, we can still show our community how united we are as a council. And I pray for my community, and I pray for this nation. I also want to extend my wishes and prayers to Charlie Kirk's family. It hasn't been easy, and when I see those videos, like, again, it's just one of the hardest things I can see. I'm a firm believer that I let the residents decide of how they want to handle things. I'm not here to belittle or to call my colleagues out. I called Mario, and I gave him my opinion and where I stand, as well as my other colleagues, I called each and every single one of you to see how my colleagues are doing during this time. And so with this vote, I still, colleagues, I see you as the A Team of Downey, and I will continue to do so after today.
Thank you, Councilmember Ortiz. I do have some, some comments, some additional comments. Again, thank you all for being here. It's kind of a long meeting here. You know, many of us tell our kids to take caution when they post on social media. The internet always seems to win. As elected officials, we are held to a higher standard. We are expected to use discretion when addressing matters in the public and on social media. We are in positions to help keep calm, lower the temperature in tense situations. And we are to take our roles as elected officials very seriously and understand our responsibilities as public servants. Not politicians, public servants. We should always maintain a professional decorum and be cognizant. We have eyes on us. And we're, we were elected, we were elevated to these leadership positions. I will say to Councilmember Trujillo that he's brought embarrassment to our city. As this whole thing, please. Thank you. As this whole thing went viral, I strongly believe that Councilmember Trujillo dishonored our first responders by making such an egregious social media post regarding a young man who was brutally politically assassinated in front of many, including his wife and two young children. We swore an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies foreign and domestic. Charlie Kirk was assassinated by a domestic terrorist. And I can't fathom what you were thinking when you took the time to add a silly Ariana Grande song to this horrendous post. Who does that? That in itself is wicked. And Councilmember Trujillo, you mentioned threats. Councilmember Trujillo, you mentioned threats. Did you bother to check with any of us, council colleagues, on the abundance of messages and threats that we were receiving because of your actions? The only threats I received? A ton. A ton. People were upset with me because I shared the dais with you. People were upset with me, even though I don't have the authority that I haven't fired you. People don't understand. But people were coming after me with violent threats. What did I do? Did you bother to check with our two admins on the third floor with all the nasty hate phone calls they were getting on September 11th? I was up, I was here, September 11th, for the ceremony. I came up to the third floor. Every minute, Isabel and Rebecca were getting phone calls. And one of them was in tears because of all the phone calls they were getting. Did you check with City Hall on the threats? Any threats received? We had a guy protesting here. Did we have a guy with the megaphone or someone yelling here, Roger? I know a lot of the staff members, a lot of them were rattled. I did mention the Code of Ethics. I did bring with me some emails, and I'll share copies of these with my colleagues here on the dais. Couple of them were referenced earlier, or at least one of them. And part of me bringing up the Code of Ethics not only has to do with the irresponsible social media post, but as representatives of the City of Downey, we're expected to conduct ourselves with dignity and treat our constituents with respect. And we get attacked, we get attacked from all angles. They come at us, but we need to be, we need to put ourselves above that and maintain professionalism. Some of Councilmember Trujillo's biggest supporters are some of my biggest critics. You'll never, ever, you can quote me on that. You'll never, ever catch me cussing or berating any of them. It's out of respect. I understand the position I'm in and what I signed up for. And just to reference, one email, one lady said that she had been, she's been a Downey resident for over 60 years. Do the math, she's a little bit older, a little bit more mature. A little bit more mature, I should say. But Trujillo's response to her, it went off on a rant on why he hates Charlie Kirk. And at the end, he closes it out with, "Well, that's just me not giving an F about Charlie Kirk." Also, he sent the same copy and pasted message to another resident in Downey, Mr. Park. And I read the email thoroughly. Mr. Park doesn't attack him with any curse words or anything in a threatening manner. But in frustration, "You don't even, you don't even know where Downey is, prick." Also on social media, and again, the emails are sent to me. I'm on the email chain, and I see this. A member of the community I see this. A member of the community reached out to me and expressed concern with being called on a social media post. She went after Trujillo, and he responded by calling her a "bendeja." Well, to be truthful, she did call him a "bendejo," but, no. But I would use discretion in that response. I mean, I, you know, a lot of people commenting after us, they don't know us. You know, we're supposed to be above that. Also, he did respond to someone else via email on this rant about, "Stop trying to shame people for not mourning Charlie Kirk." At the end, y'all give me a headache. So, when I reference the Code of Conduct, I'm thinking of not only the post. Again, I'm a big believer in the freedom of speech, but we already use discretion when we're posting on social media. And those emails and those responses really hit home with the Code of Conduct. So, at this time, because of the disrespect and the disregard for our residents, Councilmember Trujillo, I'm going to ask for your resignation. Please. Please. Please, please. We'll have order. We will have order.
May I respond?
Yes.
It's the hypocrisy that really gets me the most. Excuse me. Excuse me.
We will have order.
It's, it's really, it's the hypocrisy that gets me the most.
There's your first warning, sir. Councilmember Trujillo.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say, after listening to my colleagues, it's the glaring hypocrisy that gets me the most when you throw out words like embarrassment, a higher standard, how we speak to people, when it's known that we're on different political sides of the aisle, and you support a man, a president, who's known... Excuse me. Oh, no. It's, it's the hypocrisy that gets me the most. You want to chastise me. You want to hold me to a higher standard, which obviously you're... I'm sorry.
No interruptions, please.
It's the hypocrisy, a higher standard, how we speak to people, an embarrassment, when it's known that you support a president who embodies this and just daily offends Americans across this country. I take issue with the fact, Mr. Mayor, that you raised first responders. I don't see the connection because one thing we've always been consistent on is supporting our first responders and making sure that they have everything they need to provide public safety best. So, I take issue with that, Mr. Mayor, and you trying to continue to defame me and come up with things like a video that doesn't exist. There's been no discussion of a video, even though the public was told that we're going to be here to discuss a video. Now you're bringing up first responders. Ms. Fermetta, for clarification, I never shared your video on purpose. I refused to share your video. I thought that that was something you had to deal with your community.
Hold on. Councilmember Trujillo, hold on. Guys, listen. Seriously, we're down the home stretch. Let's be respectful. Let the man speak. Whoever's speaking here, let us have the floor. Let us get through this, please.
Thank you.
I didn't say he did, Mr. Mayor. I didn't say he shared the video.
Oh, I thought you did. I understood that. You said I shared it. For the record...
All right, guys.
Through the office of the mayor, I just, I feel compelled to warn the public. The mayor has repeatedly and respectfully asked the public to respect the council's deliberations and give everyone the time to speak. I would ask, and underscore it just one last time, that the public really heed those admonitions. I see several people who are engaging in disruptive conduct despite the mayor's warnings. So, again, I would respectfully request the public heed those warnings and allow the council to finish its deliberations in an efficient style and in a respectful manner. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Fermetta and I, just for history, she actually endorsed me when I ran for Downey City Council. I thought it was good for me to have the endorsement of a councilwoman. I didn't know her or her husband. I was introduced. And we had a conversation, and in that conversation, it was clear that when it came to the issues facing Downey, we were aligned. And we started to work together. It was not until the Gascon issue came up that we became disaligned on that issue. Thank you for the courtesy of waiting to take the vote. Y'all voted for a vote of no confidence. That, I eventually retired, as I was scheduled to do. My retirement date had been set before Mr. Gascon arrived. I went on to work, even though there was recalls going on. We always focused on the work of the city, I'm proud to say. And since then, we've been political rivals, Ms. Fermetta and I. I did participate in a protest when I arrived to Atlanta. Ms. Fermetta, by the way, is the president of the National Association of Latino Elected Officials. That was supposed to be another feather in our hat. But what happened was, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Fermetta, political forces, particularly coming out of L.A., started to attack her. And I was invited to engage, and I did not. But when I arrived in Atlanta, they said, "We're having this protest. We would like for you to participate," and I did. There is currently some discord in the organization that you're leading. They want your resignation. They're calling for your resignation. And when I'm really, and maybe you find this amusing, but I really thought that you being the president of Naleo was going to rise our city to a national platform, where we will be able to showcase the great work that our city's doing. Instead, what I found myself with was constantly, again, having to defend you because of your political views. They are, we are not happy that the three of you have chosen to not represent the entire community, LGBT families specifically, by forcing us to take down the flag, that it's an ongoing issue. Just to let you know, they're already organizing to protest you again when the conference comes to L.A., just so you know. That's an issue that we had discussed internally. We had discussed that internally, and we had tried to quash it. There's other discussions we've had, and we tried to quash those. But again, calling a special meeting to censor me over our political differences is not appropriate. It's interesting, Ms. Pemberton, that you bring up these emails. I've made it clear. I invite you to show one email where I have initiated a disrespectful conversation with anyone, where I started a conversation, where I maligned somebody's reputation, where I cussed them out, where I called them a name. You show me one email where I started it. Let's talk about my response. My response is, my response is, when I'm disrespected, I'm going to disrespect them as well. I do not subscribe. I do not. So, when you, when you run for office, when you run for office, and I knew my mouth is going to get me in trouble, which is why I waited, you have to sit here supposedly and take it. And I'll say back, that's, that was old school. That was the old days before, excuse me.
Let him speak.
There has been an erosion in the country of political discourse and respect. But to say that I have intentionally disrespected one Downey resident, that's an accusation. I'm entitled to prove, bring them forth, and show the one person that I initially disrespected. When you see these emails, look at what they were saying to me.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
This, I think, I think, we cannot go back and forth. Let me, let me say something, Mr. Trujillo, because, again, the very definition of a public servant is that. We are here to serve the public. And, and we may not like the criticism. We may not like how somebody approaches us, but we have made the choice to be here. Yes, we, we are not going to be physically assaulted and verbally harassed, absolutely. But we can return that type of language with disrespect. On one of the emails that you received, sadly, your response, and I quote here...
Can you start with the beginning of the email, councilwoman?
Mr., okay. I will. This was, this was an email from the son of the Cuban gentleman that was murdered on Saturday. And your response to him was, he forwarded this email to us, said, "Mr. Trujillo's utter response only further illustrates the dangerous hateful president I previously voiced concerns over. This is unacceptable of a public servant."
You were going to read what he wrote me.
He was very respectful in his email to you, and you were not. Sadly, this is an individual...
Can you read the email, councilwoman?
This is an individual, we're not in a courtroom. We, we, this is an individual that reached out to you as a citizen of this city, who tragically had his father murdered two days later. And because his politics apparently did not align with yours, you were disrespectful and dismissive. And I have to pull that email here.
It's on the backside. Councilwoman Fermetta, I can read it if you like.
For the public, these emails are available for public.
Oh, right here. Yes, go ahead. Yes.
September 11th. To your councilmembers, as I am sure you are aware, Councilman Trujillo's behavior in response to yesterday's tragic events has been deeply troubling and unacceptable. As a proud Downey native, where I grew up and where my family still lives, I cherish visiting home and seeing our community thrive. It's heartbreaking to watch our city cast in such a negative light because of actions like these. While elected officials are entitled to their personal views, mocking the death of anyone is unbecoming of a public servant and sets a dangerous, unacceptable precedent for the standards we uphold. In the name of decency and the values that define Downey, I strongly urge Councilmember Trujillo to resign from his position and take time to reflect on the compassion that unites us all. Thank you for your attention to this matter and your continued service to our city.
And the utter response...
May I?
Just, no, no, just a minute.
The beginning email is not here. Let's be fair. If you're going to present...
This is what, this is what was printed to us. But going back to, going back to your comments...
I do not see the beginning email, councilwoman Fermetta. I'm asking, in all fairness, I have said repeatedly that I have never... I understand that. I don't see the beginning email. Your accusation is I respected...
It's in your inbox, Councilmember Trujillo. You can pull it up.
Okay. I have never respected a Downey resident to begin with. That's just not me and my character. I do not disrespect any Downey residents, any staff member, or any of my colleagues. That's just simply not me. I have admitted that I will meet a level of disrespect with a level of disrespect. If that's why you're going to censor me, I am fully prepared to receive that consequence.
Okay. So, hold up. So, again, I want to make the distinction. There's a difference between a censure and a censor. Okay? Two different words.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, if a said council member states that if they're disrespected, they're going to match them with disre... That doesn't mean it's okay. Okay? We're supposed to be above that. We're supposed to have thick skin, and we're here to serve. We're, we're public servants. Okay? With that said, I am ready to make a motion. I will now make a motion to impose a censure on Councilmember Mario Trujillo based on the Instagram posting of his story, Instagram story posting, at subsequent impact from the actions related to the posting, including email exchanges with members of the community as discussed on the record tonight. This motion will include removal from all committees, internal and external, that Councilmember Trujillo serves on indefinitely. The motion includes direction to prepare a written resolution incorporated, incorporating the basis for censure to be adopted at a subsequent meeting in the near future. And my suggestion for this resolution is that it be prepared by outside council. I just made a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Please vote.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Trujillo abstaining from the motion and Councilmember Ortiz voting no.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, today's, I've been asked to vote twice. I maintain, under the Brown Act, that this is an improper, illegal meeting. Thank you.
Hold up. Order, order. The time, the time is now 7:20. This meeting is adjourned.